Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Sorry for a little bit of a delay. We had a longer turn to the morning, but we're here with you right now. Before we begin, I'd like to make an important land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse and first nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Recognizing the land is an expression of gratitude and appreciation for those whose territory we work and live on. And it's a way of honoring the Indigenous peoples who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial. It's also a form of reconciliation with Indigenous peoples. Please note that September 30th, which is fast approaching, marks an important national day for truth and reconciliation with Indigenous peoples. I encourage all of us to reflect, make personal connections, and to understand the longstanding history that has brought each of us to reside on this land and seek understanding of your place in that history as we honor who are the first peoples of this land. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is now called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. My name is Nadine Sankar Peralta, and I'll be chairing today's meeting. Joining me on this adjudicating panel are some pretty inspiring folks, bringing in various skill sets, Shahin Fazeli, Carol Martin, Maddy Marziani, and Mary Ann Kassen. Some hardworking city staff are also present with us in person. We have Deputy Secretary Treasurer, Mr. Simon Lam, along with planning staff Sarah Ovens, and Sam Mosayani, Brendan Clapp, and Farzane Tohidi. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid, in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch it on YouTube. Yes, it would help if I had my video on. So hello, everyone. Okay, so, and I thought I was doing so great. Okay, when your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called upon to speak. Please only use one device at a time as use of additional devices can cause static noise, which may interfere with the audio of this hearing and slow us down. To ensure further audio clarity, we ask that you do not use the speakerphone function of your telephones. Those participating by video conference will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera is and will be enabled, and you will be visible during your five-minute allotted time to speak. All other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through the WebEx are not allowed to use the shared screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist's role if you fail to respect this instruction. Now, with respect to receiving a copy of a decision of the committee, those who are attending in person today who wish to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card. And those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body, the T-Lab, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, the T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances, the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and specified persons and public bodies as those terms are defined in the Planning Act are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. With respect to the hearing procedure, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. When making submissions, where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise their chair should they wish to make, to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will ask you to summarize your presentation when you are reaching the five-minute mark without exception. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials during the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application only. The applicant or agent will proceed first and make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to the proposals. At the hearing today, the committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we'll call on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished the presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for decision, for a decision. And when panel members are in committee making decisions, there are to be no interruptions from the agent, applicant, or application attendees. So just to double-check, Deputy Lam, are there any declarations of, sorry, deferral requests?
Did you, sorry, did you do the conflicts?
I think I was supposed to start with that. So let me just double-check. Any declarations of conflict of interest? None noted. Deputy Lam, are there any deferral requests?
There are. Madam Chair, we have a deferral request for number 17, 372 St. Germaine.
Okay, number 17. Well, that's where we're going to start. Panel members, let's move to, any items to close as well? Nothing noted?
Through you, Madam Chair, there's no files to close today.
Thank you, Deputy Lam. Okay, so let's move on. Panel members, to the first item and deal with the deferral request. I'm going to be pulling that up right now. Okay, so item number 17 is St. Germaine, 372 St. Germaine Avenue. This is a proposal to construct a new dwelling. We have an agent listed here, and there are, there is one speaker that was added to my list. Oh, no, there's no one speaking to this. The agent or the applicant, the representative, is Orod Tajdaran? Mr. Tajdaran?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, everyone. This is Orod Tajdaran. I'm speaking behalf of Fairness, the applicant, for 372 St. Germaine, which we wanted to defer today because of the objection we have with urban forest.
Okay, sorry. Can you speak, state what the reason is again?
The reason of deferral is we have objection with the urban forestry, which we have one-inch trees close to the driveway. We are trying to satisfy them. We are trying to move the driveway from the proposed plan, from site plan to the existing shared driveway we have to solve that problem, which we need to redesign that area and then send it to them, get a better letter, and then suffer, get a better support from them and come back to the court.
Okay, that's, thank you for that explanation. Panel members, there is no one else to speak to this application. If there are no questions from you, can I get a motion, please? Motion from Member Martins?
I propose a motion to defer item 17, 372 St. Germaine Avenue due to satisfying conditions from forestry.
Signi Dai?
Sorry?
Signi Dai? At the next possible, we say signi dai. Okay, I take it to mean she's nodding her head. She means yes. So motion from Member Martin to defer this application, signi dai for those specific reasons, seconded by Member Kassen. All those in favor? And your deferral request sir has been approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
No problem. So let's move on then, members, to item number 12. Item number 12 is 10 Parkhurst Boulevard. Members, this is to add a rare addition and a partial third-floor addition to an existing detached dwelling and relocate the existing garage. Please note that there are seven variances. There is also a staff report of August 22nd with a small condition. Forestry condition number two applies. There was some advisory comments from Metrolinks and one letter of support, but there are on file three letters of objection, of which one is the Leeside Residents Association. Right now, I will ask that there is one neighbor to speak to this application. Can we get the agent or owner out? Francis Scherer? Francis Scherer, if you can come in and state your name, address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and committee. My name is Francis Scherer, owner, currently residing at 15 Baseball Place.
Okay, thank you. And I'll ask you to speak into the microphone a little bit better, a little bit more. I want to just ask, are you, are you making any modifications today?
No modifications. There was a typo for the lot coverage, but it would be an increase. I'm not sure if we're able to address that today. It was supposed to be 39%, not 35.3%, but if it's unable to do it today, we can live without it and move forward.
Okay, no, we can't make changes, and especially if it's changes for something that's worse. All right, so.
Yeah, I figured. It's not a problem.
Okay, thank you so much. You've got five minutes. Please let us know the merits of your application.
Excellent. So to begin, I'd like to note that from the original application that we put in, we've made reductions across the board. So variance one has been reduced from 0.65 to 0.64 for the FSI. Variance two has been reduced from 45% to 35.3%, a majority of which is dedicated to the auxiliary single detached garage. And variance four has been reduced from 19.42 meters to 18.39 meters in total. That length should mirror what was granted to number two Parkhurst, I believe it was last year. And that is only to accommodate for the first floor, not any other floors of the building in order to reduce its impact on any properties surrounding it. We have also eliminated two more feet from the partial third floor in order to ease the slope of the front main roof line in order to reduce any imposition on any of the neighborhood properties and also to fall in line with the intent of the neighborhood. This house has been carefully and thoughtfully designed and redesigned in order to maintain the overall feel and intention of the neighborhood as demonstrated by the proposed front elevation. It, the only variation is a slightly larger roof section and a dormer on top. Everything else is to remain with the same design intent. We've also designed this house in order to mitigate its impact on surrounding properties by changing the massing of the property to step down in the rear as also for the third floor, or the partial third floor to start further back from the front main wall so that it's not imposing on any other properties. The partial third floor not only steps back from the main wall of the house by about eight feet, it also exceeds, it also only exceeds the current existing property or zoning bylaw height by roughly three feet. This design should mitigate any appearance from height differential between neighboring properties from, from the sidewalk or anybody passing by. The partial third floor also ends six meters before the end of the second floor, so it's sitting, is really strictly partial. It sits mainly over the middle of any of the neighboring properties, so there shouldn't be any privacy concerns. And we are open to doing privacy shields on either of the east and west elevations of the rear deck up there. The minor variance request for length has been restricted to a single floor, as I mentioned before. And we have a letter of support from the neighboring property eight, and we have a partial letter of retraction from number 12 Parkhurst, the other neighboring property. I've met with most of the neighboring properties and had discussions about what we're trying to do, and there seems to be a general consent of mostly okay with it as far as most people can be okay with construction. I do believe that this meets the four tests of a minor variance, and it does maintain the functionality of the desired home for a growing family as well as fall in suit with the intent of the neighborhood.
Great, thank you so much for that and for the explanations. Members, do we have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Member Martin.
Can you please just, I'll come back. It's, something's happened.
Okay, not a problem.
Everything went black.
All right, seeing that there are no other questions, let's then move on to the first speaker we've got on the side. And that is, let's see, we've got a Virginia Hoffman. Virginia is here in person. Please come forward, Ms. Hoffman, and thank you for waiting. So kindly, if you can go to the podium and make sure that the mic is on. And you can, yeah, speak to it. You can, there we go, and state your name and address for our records, please.
Is the mic on? Yes, okay, thank you. Yes, Virginia Hoffman, 11 Parkhurst Boulevard. Our residence is directly across from number 10 Parkhurst. So we directly face this, this residence. I submitted a letter of objection to the Committee of Adjustment, and I would like to, shall I read that letter?
We have it on file and we have read it, but feel free to talk to it. It's your five minutes.
I will certainly speak to it. And in particular, I would like committee members to reference page 21 and page 22 of the detailed plans, which is the front and rear view of the house showing the proposed third floor extension. Well, third floor, new. Okay, so that's, that is not the proposed, the new proposed.
While they're pulling that up, how about you just begin and just tell us your thoughts?
Yeah, I, okay, first of all, the, I'm really opposed mainly to the third-floor renovation and also the, the new design, very new design of the front appearance of the house, which is not at all in keeping with the traditional design of this block. This is the only residence where there's been any proposed change on the appearance. Our block is really intact. Are we, most of the neighbors have been there 20, 25-plus years. I myself have resided 54 years in this resident. You know, it's a community issue, really, the gestalt of the community, how we try to maintain the aesthetics of Leeside. It's very, very special. And Parkhurst is a very special street. It's the entrance. Our block is the entrance, the residential entrance to South Leeside. It's quite significant. I hope that at least some members of the committee are familiar with the community of Leeside and can visualize it the way I visualize it every day.
Yes, absolutely. And we do have the Residents Association, Leeside Residents Association, who are here frequently talking to us and sharing with us their plans and all of that. So we're very much familiar. Thank you. So if there's nothing further to add, then what I'll do.
No, I would just like to,
Oh, sure.
reference then the new design. We obviously have not pulled it up yet. It's page 21 and 22.
Have they got it right?
No, that's, that's not the, that's not the proposed front design.
That, that is.
Unless he's changed it.
That's what was submitted to us. Did you receive a copy of something older, perhaps?
Okay, so, no, I'm sorry. This is it. If you'll notice, the third floor on a slope, the dormer window is really quite huge. It's quite huge. And the three rectangular windows on the first and the second floor are also very, very basic, very straight. And then an offside, I would say off-center on the second floor, that, that third window above the doorway, or sort of above the doorway, is really not very symmetrical, in my view. And also, the bricked-in covered porch with an archway is not at all, not at all in keeping with the typical traditional design of any Leeside home. I mean, we've had many, many renovations on this street. They always are at the rear of the houses. You can make huge differences in your house space and the design within without radically changing the front of the house. I mean, nearly all the street, all the houses on Parkhurst have been able to do that. It's still quite a beautiful street. As I point out in my letter, I mean, with all this doubling the volume, adding a third floor, I mean, this designed house has three bedrooms.
Okay, I mean, I'll ask you to summarize because your time pretty much is up. Sorry? You'll have to summarize now because your time is up.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, for all the above, and I just oppose the, particularly the design and the third-floor addition, which is asking for, I think, 0.9 meter. It's, you know, height variance, which I think is rather huge.
It's a lot, okay. Thank you so much for that. And just to add something, you know, it's not usually the purview of the committee to comment on design itself. We do look at the minor variances, so unless that's captured in there somewhere, you know, it's not.
A third floor is not, to me, a minor variance, and the height require, you know, ask is certainly not, to me, a minor variance.
Right, exactly. So we can look at those things instead of the outer appearance of the house. But with that, can I ask, are there any other questions? Yes, member, to the applicant? Anyone for here? Okay, thank you so much, ma'am. We were gonna.
And could I have a card then? Because I would like a decision.
Yes, Ms. Hoffman, there's, there's cards at the front, or you can come to the planning desk here, and they'll be able to provide you with a copy. Now with that, I'll invite Mr. Scherer to come back onto the phone. Come back online.
Yeah, hello.
You've heard the concerns of Ms. Hoffman. What do you have to say about that?
I, I understand and I respect her comments. I do also respectfully disagree. I believe that we've done a fantastic job in trying to maintain the intent of the neighborhood. As far as the intent of the neighborhood not being altered by any other house, I don't believe that it's accurate. Number two Parkhurst and number 17 Parkhurst are completely new builds, and they have been built within the last two years. And they vary greatly from the supposed traditional intent of the neighborhood. So as far as I do respect her opinion and, and her right to voice it here, I think we've done a great job in trying to maintain the feel of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Miss Member Martin for a comment or question. Go ahead.
Hi, I just, I just need clarification because you had mentioned that the variance for lot coverage, I think it was 35.3, that's the requested variance in the, in the public notice. But you had mentioned you should have gone for 39 or something? Can you clarify on that? And do the plans reflect, reflect 35.3? Or do they actually reflect 39%?
The plans actually reflect 39%. It was a typo in the variance, unfortunately. Yeah, the, the main house is well below the 35%. It was mostly dedicated to the garage. The garage was to be moved to the rear of the property and enlarged just to suit storage needs as well as a large vehicle that we have. And it occupied 8.5% of the total lot coverage, so it was below the variance that would be required for that. But at 35%, it still allows us to build a garage. It's just a slightly smaller one.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from panel members for Mr. Scherer?
Through you, Miss Madam Chair. I just had a question of the applicant. It's just something the resident happened to mention about the window above the door. It is off-center, is, is there some plan to make that symmetrical? I know it's not related to a variance, I just have to ask.
No, that's understandable, so, uh, in the design, it is, I agree a hundred percent. There is no question about that, but, uh, it, this is to protect the privacy of my daughter whose bathroom that would be in, and as a very hyper-protective father, uh, I didn't want it, uh, in a compromising area in her bathroom, so I, uh, I had it off-centered, I can change the size and we can try and reconfigure the bathroom to center it a little bit more.
You just need to think of the long-term situation of the look of your, front of your house, I mean, that's up to you, but-
Yeah, I understand.
Think about other ways to achieve that. And then the window on the third floor, what is the size of that window, the opening?
I believe it is three by four.
Three by four, thank you. Okay, thank you. There are no other questions? Then, uh, let's take it into committee, um, for members, um, you know, for any comments, or if you would like to entertain a motion, please note that there are no changes, it is seven variances, staff report does have one condition, forestry does have one condition, number two.
Oh, if I could speak to the, uh, the forestry condition, we have an arborist report and we've submitted for permit-
I'm sorry, sir, stop right there, I'll ask you to stop, we're in committee, so we're in decision-making right now. Please go ahead, anyone would like to make a decision or any comments?
Through you, Madam Chair, um, thank you. Uh, if there are no comments from my colleagues, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seems no comments?
No.
No, okay, so I'd like to propose a forward motion to approve the application. Um, the subject of the conditions, that the building height be developed substantially in accordance with the east and west side elevation drawings attached to the staff report, and also forestry condition number two, I believe. I think the application, um, are minor and, uh, meets the four test, in my opinion.
Great, we've got a motion from Member Frazelli to approve with those conditions. Can I have a second or for that, seconded by Member Maziarri? And all those in favor unanimously approved with those conditions, thank you, sir. Your application has been approved.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
All right, um, let's move on then to item number thirteen. Item number thirteen is number two oh one Epsom, Epsom Downs Drive. Um, please note that there's no one to speak to this application, members, it's three variances. There is a staff report asking that there's modification to be done to variances one, two, and three, or refuse them, let's get the agent out here, Edward Begaj. Edward Begaj? Yes, if you can state your name and address for a record, please.
Yeah, my name is Edward Begay, uh, uh, my address is fourteen B Lee Side Partra, Toronto, Ontario. And as I said, good afternoon, you know, yeah, so, uh, uh-
Are you making any modifications right now to the variances, sir?
Uh, we, we sent those, yeah, we did three modifications as per, uh, uh, staff recommendation.
All right, so, if you could start by telling us which variances are being modified and what they're being modified to. So ver, let's start with variance number one.
So variance, uh, number one, uh, we asked before for zero point seventy-nine meters to the west, uh, road line, and we did the, the changes on the draw that we sent to the, uh, staff to one point three meters.
So it's now one point three meters? So variance number one has been increased to one point three meters, now let's look at variance number two.
So the variance number two, we're looking for twenty, twenty-one meters for the length of the building. Uh, now we're proposing nineteen point zero meters.
Okay, so, so, um, variance number two, the proposed building length has been decreased to nineteen meters, and now variance number three with the lot coverage.
Okay, so, uh, we asked before for, uh, thirty-nine point seven. Uh, we're asking now, and we did the changes, for thirty-seven point eight.
So thirty-
Four, two hundred and ten point eighty-one square meters.
Thirty-seven point eight? Eight one, or thirty-seven point eight percent?
Yeah.
Okay, no problem, thirty-seven point eight? Sorry, can you say that one more time?
Two hundred and ten, so thirty-seven point eight percent.
Okay.
Or two hundred and ten eighty, eighty-one, uh, square meters.
Okay, got that, all right, thank you so much, um, members, um, there's no one else to speak to this application, and he's made the changes in accordance with the staff report of September twentieth. Do you require a presentation? Okay, there being none, sir, they don't, committee doesn't require a presentation, but if there's anything final that you'd like to say before we go into decision-making? I'll give you that opportunity.
I know you're tired, it took you a lot, so I'm just giving you the, uh, the time to decide, so.
All right.
I think it's clear, thank you so much.
No problem, thank you so much, so, members, we've captured those changes, um, no one here to speak to this. Can I get a motion? Motion from Member Maziarri.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I think, uh, I am comfortable to make a motion to approve this application as amended based on the fact that the applicant is working, uh, with the recommendation, uh, by the planning report. Um, I don't see any other condition to be added.
Okay, thank you so much, motion from Member Maziarri to approve with those changes, seconded by Member Frazelli, all those in favor? And it has been unanimously approved, thank you, Mr. Begay. Your application has been approved.
Thank you so much, have a good day.
Okay, great, members, let's turn now to item number fourteen. Item number fourteen is number eleven thirty-three Avenue Road. This is an application to permit a play area in a side yard, a budding a street and a front yard, and to permit a reduction in the required parking in conjunction with interior alterations. Um, this application was deferred on October twelfth, twenty twenty-three to allow the applicant to discuss with Transportation Services, um, they're back now, and so let's pull out. Um, I believe that the agent is, the main presenter is Crystal Caputo. Ms. Caputo, are you there?
Morning, Sarah. Hello, yes, good afternoon, everyone.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Crystal Caputo, one one three three Avenue Road.
All right, I did note that there are three variances, um, their Transportation, uh, left some comments on July twenty-second saying no further comments, and, uh, there was a September nineteenth memo that came in from Transport saying no objections. There are however, a couple of letters of opposition, and they're here, I believe, to talk to this, uh, some interested parties. So if you are able to, can you give us a short presentation on the merits of this case before we go on to the neighbors?
Sure, so, so Lalibu, at Lalibu, we provide childcare for a hundred and eleven children at this site, so that their parents can go to work and be confident that their children are being well cared for. We're requesting the minor variance so that we can expand the playground, and the children will have access to a larger outdoor play area. We have letters of support, which should be included in this package in our application, from neighbors and parents, I believe it's sixty parents. Um, the parking spots have been used exclusively by staff, whoever written letters, which should also be in the package to confirm that they will either use the Green Bee parking down the street or use public transit going forward. Um, and that's, that's basically where we're at, and, and really, we just hope that you'll support and agree our minor variance request so that children can have an improved outdoor play space, which will benefit their learning, well-being, and mental health, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, members, do you have any questions? Yes, Member Cassin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I do have one question, can you explain how pickup is done by parents? If they're not on foot?
Sure, there, there is a fifteen-minute, uh, drip, drop-off and pickup zone that parents use for drop-off and pickup. So they don't use the parking spaces in question.
Is that on Avenue Road or on Castlefield?
Um, I believe that Rami is also on the call with us today, and he's our architectural technologist, so if possible, may I defer to him for the specific, specific questions on location?
So is he coming on the line?
Um, I expect, I expected he was here.
Hello?
He's been unmuted, if he could state your name and address, uh, for the record, so that we can get you to speak to our member?
Uh-
Hello, my name is Rami Yusuf.
Yes.
And, uh, I'm speaking for eleven thirty-three Avenue Road.
Okay, and if you can respond to the question of Member Cassin, please? Would you like her to repeat it?
I, I can act, okay, I can confirm, Chair, apologies, it's Avenue Road where the parking spaces are located, or where the drop-off zone is located.
Thank you, I'm, I'm just asking this because I recall reading something about it from the, um, from the neighbors. And then the proposed waste collection that was proposed at the east end of the site, uh, in the right way, it looks like, um, is that still going forward? Or is that, did I read something about that being removed? It's a Moloch system.
Um-
It's been removed.
So, okay, so then, how is waste collection happening? Is it just like bins being rolled out and for pickup?
Yes, this was, yes, this was just a, uh, we, it's a better system that we usually use in our other daycare centers, so-
Oh, I see.
We thought we'd also propose it here.
Uh, okay, thank you, all right, thank you, any other questions? Um, Member Martin?
Yes, I have a question, I read the, I read your, your, um, parking report, and I find it curious that every hour you only have one to two cars dropping off, um, children if you in fact have a hundred and eleven children at this daycare. So, um, can you respond to that, how you can only have one or two cars, uh, that are parked in the fifteen-minute zone in order to drop off kids? I can imagine there might be a lineup of cars behind the actual fifteen-minute area. Or are people having to park down the street? Um, how do you end up, how do you accommodate a hundred and eleven kids, even if there are, you know, you know, groups of families? That's still an awful lot of cars or drop-offs, and some kids are, are walking, I presume, but just, can you elaborate on that, please?
Sure, so, so, um, a large portion of our families are, are local and, and don't use motor vehicles to bring their, their children. Also, the drop-off time is act, is actually quite, quite quick, it's only a couple of minutes for each car, so there doesn't seem to be a lot of, um, uh, traffic that's generated unnecessarily from that. And then, of course, a lot of folks, because of the location, use public transit as well. Not everyone drives either, a lot of parents live in the area.
Okay, any other questions before we move to the neighbors? Okay, not seeing any, so let's move on, and I will ask, um, Mr. Klapp, if, you know, who's the first one on the line that I can speak to, because I do see there's a Marian Bastar, but I'm thinking it's an agent, um, so Matthew Legg, maybe? Not speaking, he's not speaking.
Right, uh, we're gonna go to Juliana Drexler.
Okay, so Juliana Drexter, um, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Rami?
Yes, please state your name and address.
My name is Juliana Drexler, I live at two sixty Castlefield Avenue. I am just two houses over from the daycare, and, um-
We've received your letter of complaint as well, just to let you know, so it is on file. So if you can, uh, just speak to what's concerning you?
Of course, uh, what's concerning me is that there is very little parking on the street as it is. The fifteen-minute drop-off is not on Avenue Road, it is on Castlefield Avenue, which has taken away already one parking space that was available for years. Uh, the drop-off is, uh, not so much the concern, because yes, it takes, um, just a few minutes to drop the kids off, although the street is a total disaster in the morning and in the afternoon, we can't get out of our parking spaces, uh, but that's less of a concern than what is happening during the day when the teachers are parked on the street. And I, uh, I'm afraid, I don't understand what the previous speaker said about the teachers parking on the Green Bee lot. There is no Green Bee lot in the area, uh, there is no public parking in the area except on the street. Uh, the teachers are there the whole day, trades, friends, I'm a retiree, most of my friends are retired, some of them walk with canes, um, they don't find space to park when they come and visit. Everything is taken up by, maybe not all the teachers, but some of the teachers. There are in total nine parking spaces in this area on the street. Um, some of them are owned in quotation marks by, by residents on, on the street, uh, which leaves about seven parking spaces total in the whole area. That is not enough for everybody who needs to, to park here. So I'm just opposed to this, uh, parking spaces being taken away from the, uh, location where they are now.
Okay, thank you for that, members, do you have any questions of Ms. Drexler? No?
No.
Right, thank you for that, there are no questions coming through, so, um, what we'll do is let's, um, get to the next neighbor that I think might still be on here, and that's Neil Heatherington, is-
Yeah, Madam Chair, uh, staff have attempted to reach out to Mr. Heatherington, but, uh, we were unable to reach him. Oh, we may have him on the phone.
Okay, so he may be coming on the phone, if, everyone just hold down for a, um, brief moment. We're gonna put him on speakerphone, and he's on speakerphone, yes. Mr. Heatherington, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Hold on, hold on, Neil, hold on, I'm afraid to hang up on you. Okay, Neil, try again.
Thanks so much, it's Neil Heatherington, two forty-seven Castlefield Avenue.
Thank you, can you share your thoughts with us?
Sure, uh, uh, first, be, before I speak to the application, can I just, uh, shout out the staff of the Committee of Adjustment? They've been, uh, just incredibly responsive, and it's very much appreciated. Uh, so, I, uh, I'm a resident about ten, ten doors, uh, to the east of the proposed applicants, uh, 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 to the east of the applicant, and representing, uh, two four four, two four five, and two five seven Castlefield. Um, each of those addresses has, uh, has, has made it very clear that we are exacerbating an existing problem that the daycare has already brought upon the street. The parking situation is, uh, uh, is a challenge, it's unsafe, and the daycare has not managed it in an appropriate or professional manner. They have not responded to concerns of the community, and, uh, unlike the other schools in the, in the neighborhood. The, 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 the proposed, the existing location was a multi, multi-unit residential. It was not designed for a daycare, but that, be as it may, it's become that, and to remove the limited parking that they have forces their employees to continue to park on the street. Um, it forces the drop-off and the, uh, and the, uh, pickups to be dangerous. We have already had one fatality at that location, and this is an opportunity for us not to exacerbate an already bad situation. So representing those, those five houses, we are hopeful that the Committee of Adjustment will deny the application. Uh, it is inappropriate, it's not within the context of the community, it does not fit, uh, any of the traffic requirements that, uh, that we face.
Okay, thank you for that, and just a question for you, um, you know, I, you know, when I was in, you know, dealing with daycares, when, a long time ago, um, there was always tight and congested areas, but it was always for a very short, um, space of time. You know, a couple of minutes, and staff would quickly grab, uh, you know, your child, and you're out of there. Um, are you saying that that's still not, uh, good enough, or it's just not been functioning in the right way? Because, I mean, we would get letters sent at home, you are to come only between, uh, you know, this- Because, I mean, we would get letters sent at home. You are to come only between uh, you know, this twenty minute period to get. Your kid off, it's a quick handoff, you're out of there. And those would come home to us saying, you know, um, you know, what the strict rules were. Um is that just not working? I just wanted to ask in that light. Because it's not that the parking is being taken up all day, it's a morning and morning drop off and pickup, right?
With without question, it is not happening. And I'll and and I'll say why the application fails on so many merits when it comes to traffic. There is, there is on the north side of the street, as you know, uh two or three uh fifteen minute drop off locations. Those are being used, but they are filled. And they're being filled by people parking in the no stopping on the north, or sorry, on the south side of the street. That is, a- a- and so that is happening because they don't have parking on Castlefield. You know, just a few houses down the road where we would welcome that that drop off. They don't have that because the staff needs to make use of that parking illegally by parking greater than three hours. So now you are taking away what could be staff parking, exacerbating an already bad situation. And making it untenable for uh for the neighbors. It is bad planning on multiple fronts.
Right, I appreciate those comments. Members, do you have any questions of Mister Heatherington?
I I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear your comment.
I was just asking members if they had any questions of you. And no one's asking anything at this time, so what I'm gonna do is if you hang tight. And uh stay online with uh Deputy Lamb's uh phone. What I will do is I'll bring back out the agent, uh Ms. Caputo. And if you can come back out and you've heard the concerns of Mister Heatherington as well as Ms. Drexler. And if you can address those concerns, please, because whilst transport didn't have a concern. Um these are the residents that are living there. And what say you to these concerns?
Madam Chair, um if we may, we have a a Jana Broadbeck that's raised their hand. They're not registered. But perhaps we can unmute them to see if they wish to speak to this.
Yeah, absolutely. So if we can unmute them, Ms. Broadbeck, is it? If you can state your name and address, please, for the record?
My name is Yana Broadbeck. I live at two sixty five Castlefield. I live just diagonally across the 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 street from the school. Um I wholeheartedly support the comments from um the other two neighbors. Um our driveway and our neighbors directly on either sides driveways are constantly blocked. Throughout the day, um we, I I know the neighbor across the street from us have taken numerous photos. I had submitted a letter, a very long letter opposing this last year. And then I didn't get a notification that the hearing had moved, otherwise I would have sent another letter. Um and then I think my main concern is I have an an elementary aged school child who needs to walk to school by himself. The street is so heavily clogged with cars in the morning between eight thirty and nine. And then in the afternoon, when he comes back, that it becomes a hazard for the older children walking to Allenby, which is the school right across Avenue Road, and they have to use the pedestrian crossing. Which is essentially um a blind spot for car turning into Castlefield from Avenue Road. And for cars turning into Avenue Road from Castlefield. That entire section has become a complete blind spot. And every single parent on our street have told their child not to use the pedestrian crossing. Which is right where the school is because it it is so dangerous. So it's essentially the way it is today. It's rendered that pedestrian crossing unusable because it is so incredibly dangerous. So I cannot, and also I I severely want to challenge the idea that it's only staff who park in those five spots. It is not possible. I cannot, I cannot, I see, I, my office looks directly out over the school. I see cars pulling in and out of there the entire day long, so I challenge that. Thank you.
All right, thank you for for that. Members, do you have any questions of Ms. uh Broadbeck?
I have one question, Madam Chair. Is there a crossing guard at that pedestrian crossing? For the uh, when the schools. When the schools in session?
Yeah, there is. There is not, no.
Have you requested one?
I don't know if one has been pressed requested. There's a crossing guard at the other two intersections nearby, not this one.
The signalized intersection. I presume.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Right, any other questions? Okay, and I'll check in with Mister uh Klapp. Thank you, Ms. Broadbeck. Check in with Mister Klapp if there's anyone else, just to make sure.
I believe that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, so let's bring back out the agent, um Ms. Caputo. You've heard uh some of the very poignant pleas from the neighbors who are living there. Um who are talking about daily challenges um from their perspective and what they see. Uh can you help us understand how you intend to mitigate that or what what can you say about that?
Sure, a- and thank you, and thank you for the feedback. I completely understand that. Um you know, there's challenging, there's there's traffic issues throughout the city. This this certainly isn't unique. But what we we do have is a crisis, a childcare crisis in Ontario. And um it sounds like the members are just sort of trying to relegate. That they don't want the daycare to be there at all, which isn't what we're here to discuss today. We're here to discuss a minor variance on repurposing parking spaces for an outdoor play space. I would like to confirm for comfort of uh this group that those parking spaces are exclusively used by staff. And that they have signed letters confirming and committing to the fact that they will park at the Green Pea Parking, which is a ten minute walk away. As far as the comments around traffic flow, we will absolutely take that back and see if there's any way for us to use staff in a way that can sort of take that pressure off and expedite that drop off and pickup. Uh we have a ri- a wide variety of drop off and pickup times due to the fact that we service several families who work shift work and and try to accommodate as much as possible so that folks can get to work and meaningfully provide for their families. So um uh thank you very much for your consideration. I believe that we've addressed sort of the concerns as they relate to the minor variance request and and refer to your wisdom. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um any questions of uh Ms. Caputo at this time? Um Ms. Martin, member Martin, go ahead.
I have a question, um thanks. Uh so it's sort of twofold. Because if you take away the parking spaces, um the other side of it is that you're gonna create a playground where the parking spaces were. And it looks like it's all hard service right now. So my first question is, where do the kids go now to play? And my other question is, um will you, I think that playground's gonna be twenty. Gonna be eight hours of play all day, every day, because if you have a hundred and eleven kids. And you take thirty one and the capacity for the playground is thirty one children. You've got around to eight hours of play where you have to cycle through the kids to come out. So I just want to um want you to comment on that. And also, where do you take the kids right now to play? Thank you.
Thank you for the question and for your chair. Uh there there is an existing play space. This is just going to be an expansion of that play space. So there won't be any additional noise disruption or anything of the sort. It'll just be expanding the existing play space that the children currently use throughout the day and give everyone a little bit more room to explore nature.
Okay, thank you. It would have been handy to see, like, I don't see, maybe it's here in your package. And a uh drawing showing the existing, the existing condition. And then what it will look like, obviously, when you take the parking away. Is there a plan you can refer me to that shows the existing condition with the three parking spots?
Rami, can I defer to you to direct the member please to the next place?
Oh, sorry, there there wasn't one submitted. Uh but if you look at the elevations, um it it the existing um ends after like this. The existing playground right now ends at like this in between uh. Not in between, so after the first parking gar- after the first two parking garages. Because there's like four garages in the back, so then like there's a fence line at the in between.
Okay, see that. So would you say about, right now, about half of the um? The yard is dedicated to play space right now?
Yes, oh, actually, yes.
How do you cycle through a hundred and eleven kids in half the play space, but right now? Because that would be half the capacity.
I think, absolutely. Yeah, that's part of the reason we're requesting the expansion, right, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um thank you for that. Uh there are some concerns we are talking amongst ourselves. And in fact, we will probably discuss this in committee, but are there any other questions? If there are no other questions, let's bring it into committee and I can sort of just kick us off. Because, you know, in a way, I, and this means no interruptions, everyone, we're in committee decision making now. But uh from my perspective, I'm thinking of this, you know, saying, I'm hearing what the neighbors are saying. They're making some valid points, but we're not here to say whether the daycare should or shouldn't be there. It's around the parking spaces and exacerbating it. Um but the children need sort of a place uh to play. Uh and I'm always asking the question to myself, well, why so many students? You know, why have haven't they done the due diligence before to ensure that the traffic flow was uh better? So that we won't be in a position to exacerbate or worry about the five spaces. Why weren't staff being told even beforehand, use the Green Pea? You know, so that folks would feel that they were being heard or listened to in the neighborhood. So um with this now, to me, this exacerbates already uh growing tensions in a situation there. That I I don't know can't be, you know, helped. And it begs the question, do you have too many students for the school than is needed? But that's just my thoughts, so go ahead if anyone wants to jump in.
Well, uh thanks uh Madam Chair and I thank you uh Ms. Martin for the questions. I think my opinion here is, I'm looking at, you know, where this, where the needs are. Like a daycare, the daycare is there. We're talking about the parking spot right now, I understand. I'm hearing how neighbors are concerned in terms of the traffic flow. I see that the transportation do not have any obstruction anymore. They have the studies, they checked for it. I went through the studies as well. Implementation of that, the schedule that I see, could not be always followed through, in my opinion. It's not like we are living in a environment that it's run by robots to exactly this time arrive and leave and pick up. There could be situation where parents may arrive late. And this could disturb the flow or the schedule that they shared in the study. Which points that to what neighbors are, neighbors' concerns are. Um in such situation, I'm looking at if if the like proposing of these variances are a reasonable adverse impact or it's unreasonable adverse impact. In my opinion, w- w- with what I'm seeing and hearing and reading, it would be unreasonable. That's, that's my opinion. Uh I wish that the variances would have been uh proposed in a way that they could meet in some way in balance. Like removing the whole parking spot, like maybe mitigate the numbers. So that's, that's my thought. So I thought to share with everyone and see where other panel members think of this.
So you're saying the adverse impacts is to the actual neighbors or it adverse impacts to?
In in my opinion, it would be unreasonable.
Yeah, and unreasonable.
There's the adverse impact there, but it's not reasonable.
Yeah. Okay. So any other comments?
I will just weigh in with some comments. Um there is some impact, but I can think of several daycare centers that are very similar to this, where it's very congested at time of pickup. Um and I realize it's an imposition to the residents who maybe lived there for a long time and didn't have a daycare there. But I can think of other sites where they've converted detached houses into daycares, multiple detached houses in a row. On a side street like this, um and people manage, it's an urban situation. And I think there are other things that could be done. There's enforcement, um contacting the counselor for help. You know, there there are mitigation measures. And because transportation, um the transportation services people don't have concerns. I kinda have to lean on that side of things.
Right.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Ms. Kessen. I think um uh in this case, I would rely on the transportation report. I think they did a detailed study. There's a parking justification. I understand it's uh um it may not be as as convenient as uh before for neighbors. But I think I, in this case, this is their expertise and I would rely on that, so.
Any final comments? I think we've hit this from various angles and so how about a motion? Member Kassen.
I'll be brave and make a motion. Um Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion for approval of this application. I think that um what is being proposed, uh it requires a lot of um. Initiative on behalf of the proponent to manage their staff and parents. And uh perhaps, you know, liaise with the neighborhood to to make sure that they're not impacting people. People's driveways should not be blocked, that's unacceptable. Um but I think overall, the the variances are minor. And it's a reasonable application and it's desirable for the area. So for that reason, putting forward the motion for approval.
Okay, motion from member Kassen for approval of this application. And seconded by member Mas Marziari and all those in favor. And all those opposed. Man, you've put me in this difficult position. I was really hoping. You know, I I I hear everything that the agent um was saying. And it's sort of the need and not, you know, w- wondering that transport actually has a huge, you know. It's a bitter relief that they're not there, there's no concerns there. But I just feel that um, you know, going forward with this exacerbates um already uh a very strained uh situation. And perhaps those extra spots uh are probably needed for the area. Despite the fact that transport is not concerned, um I take really to heart what the pressures are going on in that neighborhood. Um and the fact that other schools do go through this, but perhaps have managed it way better. And this may have to drive, um you know, the owner of this school to do a better job with the neighborhood. And to uh ensure that things are enforced so that it doesn't have that impact. So I'm not going to go with that motion. And so I'll ask for a new motion from either member. Martin or. Or um member uh Fazali?
Yes, I I I I totally understand like um the explanation. Um but in in this case, I think I forward a motion. I was thinking to maybe the situation where if the applicant was open to like, see what they could do or make some changes, like thought of deferring it. So.
Do you want me to chime in?
Yes, if you'd like to.
I think that taking away the parking impacts the neighborhood more than just the parking. I think it's more complex than just losing three parking spots. And then, you know, making sure that the staff park in um designated parking lots, et cetera. I think it's it's broader, a broader issue than that. And I'm proposing to refuse this application to uh for this minor variance.
Member Martin with a motion to refuse this application, seconded by?
Yes, I second that motion.
Member Fazali, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? Member Kassen and member Marziari are opposing. And I will go with that motion to refuse this application. Thank you. Your application has been refused. Okay, members, let's move on to item number fourteen. Uh, sorry, fifteen, uh, and thank you, and that is 196 Glenvale Avenue. And please, whenever anyone uh, needs a break, uh, feel free to let me know. Uh, otherwise, I'm just going to sort of sparehead, go ahead and of this, so item number fifteen is a proposal to construct a new detached dwelling with integral garage. And this application was actually deferred on the hearing of uh, March twenty twenty four. Um, please note that there are a couple of folks here to speak to this uh, application. And there are six variances. Um, a staff report of September nineteenth, asking us to uh, modify variance number five. There is a forestry condition number one and there are five letters of objection, so let's get the agent out here. Mr. Jim Pfeffer, Mr. Pfeffer, if you can come out and state your name and address for the record, please.
Oh yeah, good afternoon, I'm Jim Pfeffer from ninety-five St. Clair Avenue West.
Okay, thank you, and if you can provide us with a short presentation, uh, cause there's.
Can I speak to these changes first in the staff report?
Sure, absolutely, go ahead.
Yeah, so I personally spoke with John Andreski, uh, the manager for community planning and he said that community planning wouldn't have any issues with this proposal at point seven six FSI. And so that is what we are doing, is changing variance number five to point seven six FSI. And I've talked to the neighbors on both the east and the west and notwithstanding the fact that we aren't asking for a variance for balcony, they've asked that the committee uh, impose a condition that we have a translucent privacy screen on either side of the balcony that we do have and we'd be happy to accept such a condition should the committee um, yeah, want to impose one.
Okay, so you're suggesting that um, variance number five is now going to uh, read point seven six times the area of the lot as well as you're wanting to implement privacy screens on the balcony? I'm presuming standard one point five meters in length or height, sorry?
Yeah, and I, I prefer translucent rather than opaque, but uh, it's your call.
Translucent, okay. And it was number five, two point seven six uh, times. Now, any presentation with that, anything else that you'd like to say?
Uh, no, I did say that I discussed that with community planning and they told me that that was a number that they thought uh, was acceptable and they didn't have a problem once that number was implemented. And I do have a presentation, if I could start on page two, uh, that would be great.
Okay.
So, one thing we've tried to do above all with this house is to make a lease side house. And I think you heard from the residents' parkhurst earlier this afternoon about just how important that lease side character is and that is absolutely what we've tried to preserve here. This is a two-story house with a pitched roof. It's got all that brick on the facade, it's got a very classical stoop in the front. That stoop is at grade, we've tried to minimize the presence of the garage and the front elevation. The driveway is over the footprint of the existing driveway. We're preserving that handsome tree you can see in the bottom inset here. Our, our front yard is open and almost entirely soft landscaping. So we've done everything to follow those lease side character guidelines that the Rate Payers Association prepared and that were published by council. And we've also done that in terms of preserving the front character of the building and then making the building a little bit longer to fit the needs of our clients. But we are not asking for a length variance or a depth variance. So from our prior proposal, we've moved from ten variances to six and a significant reduction is we no longer have a length or a depth variance. So if you could just take a look at the first page, that's the site plan and I wanna sort of highlight to the committee those dark blue dashed lines, that's the existing driveway, we're entirely within that existing driveway footprint. We can't make it any smaller to the west because you wouldn't be able to get into the garage and we can't bring it away from that side property line because that neighbor to the east relies on that driveway and the space between the homes to access her side door. And so what we've done is we've actually created a greater setback to that eastern property than the bylaw requires. We made a shorter setback on the west and we're asking for variance there, we've discussed that with that neighbor, they had no problems with that and I'll show you some photos of that essentially like maintenance and access side yard later on. On page three, speaking to FSI, immediately across the street, you'll see that flat roofed house that was approved by this committee with a variance of point seven FSI, but the, the rules were different there than now, that would be a point nine eight house. And when it was approved, it was point nine under the old lease side bylaw. And you can just see the presence of all of that floor area in the massing of that house. And then on the right-hand side, that's a house that's two doors west, one ninety-two Glenvale. You can see it presents as three stories, point eight two FSI. And then what we're proposing in the middle, two stories with a pitched roof, door right at grade, not elevated at all, point seven six FSI, that's what we're asking for. So very much in keeping with that lease side character. Couple of pages further on, these lease side character guidelines. And like I said, we've tried to comply one more page with all of these lease side character guidelines. The use of brick, maintaining the alignment of the front yard setbacks, preserving the tree, all that soft landscape. Having, minimizing the presence of that driveway and the garage and then having that traditionally styled front stoop. You know, all of the lease side character guidelines, we've been very, very careful to follow. I love this neighborhood, my colleague lives here, we're big fans of lease side. On the next page, you'll just see we are asking for that side yard setback. These are all photos on Glenvale of these narrow side yard conditions. And on the bottom, that's our existing west side yard condition, that neighbor to the west has no problems with this proposal and that's the kind of condition that we're maintaining. On the next page, we've included an aerial photograph, our site plan is up in the kind of top right there. But if you take a look at this page, you can see we're maintaining that front street line and also at the back, we're maintaining that line of the back of houses in the pattern of open space. Um, so, and like I said, we're not asking for a length or a depth variance. On the next page, we've done some uh, research on decisions. I mentioned the floor area of those two houses in the, like, right next to this lot. Um, in terms of lot coverage, there's uh, I think fourteen Kildere, which is actually just nine doors uh, to the east and they have a lot coverage variance, very similar to what we're looking for. And we've tried to get that lot coverage again in a house that maintains that character. Uh, and then the next page is some houses on this street and I think you'll find what we're proposing is gonna be a positive addition to this streetscape, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that, members, do you have any questions?
Through you, Madam Chair, thank you so much. Question for the applicant, I want to know if we were to I'm talking about variance number five, you have modified it to zero point seventy-six. So if we were to approve this variance with zero point seven FSI, how would this change and trigger other variances?
How would that change the other variances?
Would it change or not?
I think what he's saying is would it change?
If you were to uh, change that variance to point seven, which we've, we've really dug into reducing the floor area of this house and I speak in my letter about how important, say, the study space is to this homeowner who needs to work at home um, and how um, we've got that floor area. You know, the house has a bigger lot coverage because we haven't made it three stories. Yeah, we could probably take all these variances and build a three-story house with, with less lot coverage. You know, it, it's hard to say, we've taken a look at reducing the floor area and I think we've really cut it to the bone as far as what is going to meet the needs of this homeowner. So thank you very much for that question. It could conceivably reduce the lot coverage, but maybe not.
Through you, Madam Chair, I think I still did not receive the answer for my question. So if the applicant, I understood your explanation, I appreciate that, the reasoning behind what you proposing. I understood that and that's your need, I acknowledge that. I'm requesting the explanation, if we were to apply zero point seven, would have been triggered or changed any other variances that you are proposing in this application?
Well, no, because the height is there because we would design this attractive roof. The side yard setback is there because the client wants brick on both sides of the house and we've made a greater side yard setback to the neighbor to the east. Possibly, there would be a reduction in lot coverage if we shrunk both floors simultaneously, but we wouldn't necessarily do that, so possibly lot coverage would be reduced, but it wouldn't necessarily have to be reduced while still reducing the GFA.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any other questions? Okay, there being none, uh, let's move on to the first speaker and let's talk to Jeff Cattell of the Leeside Residents Association, Mr. Cattell. If you can state your name and address for our records and tell us what you think.
Uh, good afternoon, yeah, Jeff Cattell, um, Leeside Residents Association, sixteen oh one Baby Avenue. Um, we um, we are opposed to the variances in this application. Appreciate what the um, um, Mr. Pfeffer speaks in terms of, of the character, agreed that it's a two-story home and it uh, it, it is at, it's not an elevated home, it's at ground level and uh, there's been some, some fairly careful attention to fitting into the neighborhood. However, it, the, it's really more just a question of volume. The um, between the previous application and the current application, um, the, the length was uh, reduced, um, but the other the other variances are still there, um, as mentioned, the FSI. An FSI as applied for, a point eight, um, in uh, whereas the, the um, the zoning bylaw is point six. That's a thirty-three percent uh, premium on top of the uh, of the zoning bylaw. It's, that's really massive, unheard of. And um, uh, the lot coverage also, um, at forty percent, um, is, is very high. So the um, on the one hand, um, we are pleased um, with, with the improvements that the applicant has made from the earlier in the year uh, proposal, but um, I think there is a there, there could be a bit way to go yet, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, members, do you have any questions of Mr. Cattell? Okay, there being none, let's then move on to the next speaker, a concerned neighbor by the name of Rasa Ma- Mai-Victory. Rasa Mai-Victory?
Madam Chair, I've been advised that they no longer wish to speak to this, we're gonna move on to uh, James Hartley.
Okay, not a problem, James Hartley. If you can state your name and address, you've been unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you, my name is Jim Hartley, I live at one seven six Glenvale Boulevard. Uh, before I begin my presentation, I have a message from Rasa Maya Victory who lives at one, one ninety-eight Glenvale Boulevard. Uh, Rasa Maya has experienced a medical emergency today and will not be able to attend this meeting. She apologizes for her absence. Rasa Maya did not ask me to present for her, nor am I privy to any additional information she may have wished to present. The Committee of Adjustment has her concerns as submitted by letter earlier this month. I think I can speak for everyone present that we wish Rasa Maya a speedy recovery. I'd like to thank the Committee of Adjustment for bringing all parties together in order to air both grievances and support for the proposed two-story house at one ninety-six Glenvale Boulevard. Tribunals such as these are set up to bring all parties together with the ultimate goal of reaching a consensus somewhere in the middle of the divergent opinions. I don't want to reiterate what I've already written in my letter to you. Committee members are well, as well as interested parties would, would have already read it. I would like to bring your attention to the front yard setback though, which is particularly, which is a particular bone of contention for me. I did, I think it's extremely important to hold frontages in line with each other along the entire streetscape. In this particular case, the frontage being sought is six point nine one meters, while the guideline is seven point two two meters. I hope the Committee of Adjustment holds to the current zoning bylaw. Finally, from our macro perspective, I'd like to know the metric used by the Committee of Adjustment to define a minor variance. This has come up time and time again whereby minor variances from fifteen to forty percent and possibly more are being sought. In my mind, a minor variance is something in the neighborhood of five percent. If you had a grocery store increasing their prices by twenty-five percent and their public relations department called it a minor increase, there would be a significant outcry. I do hope the Committee of Adjustment can over time seek legislative means to stick to a firm percentage variation for all variances being sought. This would provide clarity and an objective method for builders to move forward on. It should also greatly reduce the number of these committee meetings in the future, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for that and for those um, helpful comments. Members, do you have any questions? Of Mr. Hartley? There being none, I just wanna check in, Ms. Mr. Clapp, there's no one else? That's noted on there?
That's correct.
Okay, and I don't see anyone in the audience who's wanting to speak to this. So let's invite uh, Mr. Pfeffer back onto the line and you've heard what the Residents Association and some of the uh, concerned neighbors have had to say. You have five minutes.
Uh, yeah, so um, speaking to what Mr. Hartley had to say, he mentioned that of his, to him, his particular concern to keep the frontages in line. So this building has neither a length nor a depth variance, so that back wall is in a position that's as of right. Uh, we are asking for a small front yard variance, so it's uh, you know, thirty centimeters. We still keep with the intent of the zoning bylaw by having, you know, maintaining the line of the street. You know, those very, that in particularly in lease side, there's a little bit of variation there with stoops and, and things, but I think if you take a look at this building, we, we maintain the street line and that's the intent of the bylaw. And I think we've got that very small front yard setback variance, we don't need it. We could get rid of it by pushing the house back. But I think, given that we are a little bit longer than the neighbors to either side, we'd prefer to have it at the front where it seems to fit in rather than at the back where it's gonna be more impactful. We could get rid of this variance by moving the house, but we think it's better this way. He mentioned the neighbor to the side, Russ Manny. She's the one who has the like twenty-inch setback to her side door, so a non-functional side door without being able to use the space between the house we're proposing and hers, her house. You know, I talked to her personally, I saw her letter to the committee, which I think is mostly a statement of concerns rather than objection. And I think she mentioned things like drainage, preserving the slide access, having that privacy screen on the balcony and we've done all of those things on her behalf. So absolutely, I respect the concern. done all of those things on her behalf. So absolutely, I respect the concerns of her or immediate neighbor to the east. The neighbors, the immediate neighbor to the west had objected in the past, and they would withdrawn their objections with this revised proposal. So finally, Jeff, from the Lee Side Ratepayers Association, I really appreciate what he had to say about the careful attention we've made to fit in, and we have, and I hope you'll take that away, that we really made this house fit into the neighborhood. He said it's a question of volume, and that the FSI we're seeking is unheard of. But two doors, we're asking for point seven six, two doors to the west, there's point eight two, that was approved by this same committee. And it's the same with lot coverage, you know, nine, nine doors to the east, there's a house that was a greater or, you know, equivalent lot coverage to what we're seeking. And the reason we have this lot coverage is because we kept the house two stories rather than jumping up to a third-story house, like a lot of those houses that you see on this street. We've kept it at two stories. That makes for a slightly longer house, but not a length that requires a variance. And inside of that house, we've got a young family. Both of them need to work at home occasionally, and inside of that house, we've really, you know, at at point seven six, we've taken it down to what will work for their lifestyle and still very much fit in with the character of this community and the block. You can see that in the aerial photograph. You can see that in the site plan compared to the neighbors. You know, this is a house that is not impactful to its neighbors beyond what's contemplated in the bylaw. This is a really Lee Side house. The timer's not running, but I think, I think I've addressed those questions. So unless the committee has any other questions.
Great, thank you so much. Members, any other questions? Yes, Member Martin?
I have a quick question. Why is it that you have such a huge, it's called trust space? It's almost like a third story, but you're, it's just a roof area. Why is this, what's the purpose of having, because you could virtually probably eliminate that variance of the of the building height if you redesigned the, the, almost looks like a third story, but it's a roof, a roof?
That, that's a great question. We could eliminate the height variance if we made a shorter roof, because it's all trust base. And I think it's, my opinion as an architect, that it's a more, makes for a more attractive house. If you could maybe bring up the front rendering, it it's a more attractive house to have a roof that has a certain amount of heights and and presence. It doesn't cast any shadow, any more shadow than an as-of-right roof would. And as a matter of fact, if you look in our booklet, we did a shadow study, and you'll find, notwithstanding that side yard setback variance we're asking for, an as-of-right house with eaves would cast a bigger shadow than this house, notwithstanding the height variance, because it's it's a hip roof which recedes in perspective from all sides. You see, like, if you drive around Toronto, you'll see a lot of houses with really squat roofs, and I find it's a very common opinion that those squat roofs do not look very attractive. So we've got this substantial roof. You can see, it doesn't look as big in perspective as it looks in elevation because it recedes, and we think it's basically a more attractive house. If you want to strike that variance, it wouldn't affect anything about this house, but I think it would be less attractive, and honestly, less in keeping with the Lee Side character without that roof. So that's kind of a long answer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions, panel members?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair, thank you. In, I, I liked the applicant. If you could just clarify, you mentioned that there are two houses that they were approved for point eight, I guess, something. When I'm looking at the staff report, they mentioned, if you can have the staff report on screen, Madam Chair, it mentioned that the, the Committee of Adjustment for FSI in the neighborhood have been consistently below zero point seven. So I'm looking at one report here, which explains zero point seven and below, and your presentation that goes above that. How would I lean towards, basically, I should lean towards the staff report, which done the study in the neighborhood, and they have the numbers, unless you have more explanation of convincing of those numbers that you shared?
Yeah, well, I, I think a couple of things. If we could take a look at the, the, those three side-by-side elevations on page three of our booklet. So the one that's on the right-hand side of that page, of our booklet, not our drawings, the one that's on the right-hand side of the page is two doors to the west, and that had a Committee of Adjustment decision from this committee for point eight two FSI. I saw that decision with my own eyes. It's absolutely undeniable that that's the case. That house that's there on the left was approved by the committee, and it was approved with point seven FSI under the new zoning bylaw and point nine under the Lee Side bylaw. And if you go one page down, we actually found the OMB decision for that thing, and you may remember that there was a time under the new zoning bylaw that a, you counted floor area above the first floor, and the first floor was a floor that was closest to established grade but above established grade. And so you can see that little red rectangle towards the front on the right-hand side of this page. That was the part of that whole first floor, which was then considered a basement of this house that was counted towards that point seven. Now, the City of Toronto and the appeal body that was reviewing the zoning bylaw basically found that that was a poor metric of measuring the area of buildings. And so it made a definition that was very close to the Lee Side bylaw, which basically said, you know, if it's more than half above the ground, it's floor area, and that's absolutely true of this house. But if I read the OMB decision, you know, the people who approved that, you know, were absolutely aware of the impact and the mass of this volume that they approved, as were the committee members who approved point eight two, two doors over. And then just in terms of study, if you go to page eight, you know, there is a study of variances in the neighborhood, and that's a study that we've done. And I think that we have done, you know, I think those are, you know, some of the higher numbers in the area, but I think what we've done, you know, we're asking for a number that is not unprecedented in the area, and we've done it in a way that absolutely, we worked so hard to make it fit in with the character of the neighborhood and not be impactful to the neighbors. And I think that's why, you know, I think that's why I said the neighbor to the east is is onside, and I think we've done a lot, and I think we've really addressed the concerns of the neighbors to the, to the, we have addressed them to the west, and I think we've done a lot to
Okay.
the the neighbor to the east, addressed the concerns. It's page eight that has all of the study that we did of variances, and all of those variances we we received from the Committee of Adjustment, and we, and there's an analysis of all of them there.
All right. With that, any other questions? All right. Well, let's pull this into committee now for decision-making. I'll ask that everyone not interrupt. Committee members, what are your thoughts? How are you feeling? Could I entertain a motion? Member Maziarri?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I personally think it's a supportable application. I, I think it's a well-thought design, and I think that the variance number one could be easily eliminated as the applicant mentioned, but I think it's quite minor. And as for FSI, we are dealing with a number, and that would be a problem for me if there was a length or depth variance, but I don't see those. So I, I think, for me, it meets the four tests, so.
All right. Motion from, did you want to?
I can make a motion if my colleagues don't have any for the call.
Sure. Okay, sorry. Okay, go ahead.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, subject to urban forestry condition, and the community planning is actually requesting less FSI, so I would exclude that.
Okay, but the member did make changes in terms of?
Oh, sorry, as amended, as amended. So the FSI is reduced to zero point seven six, and also I would include the privacy screen for the third floor on on three sides.
That's translucent.
And forestry one.
All right, great, great. So we've got a motion from Member Maziarri to approve this application with the variance number five, point seven six FSI is how it's time, point seven six times is now how it reads, and privacy screens on either side of the balcony, that's translucent, as well as forestry condition, did we say? Oh, so the privacy screens are one point five meters in height?
Translucent?
Translucent and forestry condition number one. Okay. So who's seconding that? Member Kassen seconds it. All those in favor? And this application is unanimously approved. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Pfeffer, your application has been approved with those conditions.
Thank you so much. Have a great afternoon.
Okay, thank you. I will ask members, if you're feeling tired or planning staff too, please tell me when you need a break. But we only have a couple more after this one, and they might be really, there's, there's three right now. This one doesn't have anyone because it's actually a neighbor in support, and the other two don't have any. So. You want to take a little break? Yeah. So ten-minute break from the panel members, please. Thank you. We'll be back in ten minutes. Thank you. We'll be back in ten minutes. Thank you. We'll be back in ten minutes. Thank you. I mean, they're, they're not big. Okay, we're gonna get started again. We're good. Okay, there we go. Thumbs up. Just need his direction, you know? All right, so everyone, we're gonna be turning our attention to item number sixteen. Number sixteen is number six twelve, Castlefield Road. Everyone, this is a, an application to construct a new detached three-story dwelling with a pool and a cabana in the rear yard. Now, this application has sixteen variances. There is one forestry condition number one. And there is a transportation request of September eighteenth requesting deferral. But they've got twenty-one letters of support as well. There is one person that's noted to speak here, but it's actually a neighbor in support. So we don't know if we're gonna sort of get there, but let's bring out Georgina Myers.
Sorry, Madam Chair, it's actually Mr. Bronskill that'll be representing.
Okay, so Mr. Bronskill, if you're, you're unmuted, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. David Bronskill, three, three, three Bay Street, Suite three, four hundred, Toronto, Ontario, here as agent for the applicant.
Okay, that's great. Now, um, I'm wondering, committee members, um, I, I'm not sure if you need a presentation on this, seeing that there's no one else.
I have some concern with this application, so.
Okay, so Mr. Bronskill, they do have some questions, so how about you provide a brief five-minute, you know, presentation and let's take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm happy to go through the variances. I can also speak quickly to the transportation memo and, and answer any questions that the committee may have. As noted on the public notice, it is a proposal that have a new detached three-story dwelling. It is for my client and their family and their six children. They are there today but are outgrowing the existing house that's on the lot today. In the presentation materials that we've prepared and provided at the committee, that house is shown in green as well as the existing driveway. I'm gonna pause just both on that site plan and for the committee's perspective, the survey. There is an existing driveway today that is accessed from Castlefield Avenue and also from Chaplain Crescent. I'm gonna call this a key lot because if you can see the frontage down on Castlefield there is only eleven meters. You can see where the existing driveway is. And when I get to the site plan, you'll also see that the proposed driveway out to Chaplain has actually been narrowed somewhat. But it is my client's desire to have both access points. It's because the location of that driveway on Castlefield is located almost right at the corner. In fact, there is a stop sign and the white bar associated with stopping vehicles. If you've been out to the site or seen it on Google Earth, basically right in line with the western edge of that existing driveway. I acknowledge Chaplain Crescent would be deemed to be the higher order road, but both Chaplain and Castlefield Avenue frankly experienced a fair amount of traffic. And I think further east over at Castlefield and Avenue Road, you heard some evidence from certain people in the neighborhood about traffic at Avenue Road and Castlefield. It's a very similar situation here. And I think it's why there are twenty-one letters of support for this proposal, including that driveway. There are other driveways on Chaplain Crescent as you go up Chaplain Crescent, including for corner lots. And so we are not in fact taking a new condition or we're not exacerbating anything because it is an existing condition. The variance, Madam Chair, I would group into a few different categories. There are some associated with the building itself, the front yard setback. But for example, as, if staff don't mind, just quickly going to the site plan at page three of the presentation. It's, the, the front yard setback is measured to what I would call architectural elements of the front porch. But the main wall of the building in fact does comply with the front yard setback. There are length and depth variances, but we included in the package at page four, in fact, an additional diagram that shows you because of the shape of the lot, how building length is measured. So it's actually measured to a corner of the house drawn at a perpendicular line. Page four, we've shown that in fact the actual building depth is nineteen point two, which is just above the bylaw. The second floor length is eighteen point nine one. And the third floor, through some step backs, is actually only eleven point two one meters in its length. So the actual above-grade structure itself is quite a modest house. There are some variances associated with rear porches, front stairs. I'm gonna say those are technical variances, although I'm happy to access any question, answer any questions you may have. The rear yard variance is there, but that's actually an improved condition over what exists on the site today with the existing dwelling. There is an FSI variance, but we've included for the committee numbers of FSI's that have been approved in the area that are all in above eighty and a few that in fact are above ninety on the stretch. And then finally, there is a variance associated with the swimming pool, which I'm gonna again suggest to you is a technical variance associated with this being a corner lot. The last thing I would just say, because you may have some questions, is there, there is also a front yard landscaping variance. But as I noted, there is an existing driveway that in fact is being narrowed. And so much of that front yard landscaping variance is in fact an existing condition and planning staff have not raised any concern with it. I, I will answer any questions you may have on the driveway. I will just say this in my last twenty seconds, from a safety perspective, having this driveway, and I think why the neighborhood is so supportive of it, it enables forward movements in and out of the property, whether it's to Chaplain or whether it's to Castlefield. If the transportation staff recommendation is heated, it would be, it would cause cars to back out at Castlefield right into the stop sign area, which would not be safe. And so I understand why they're asking for it because of Chaplain Crescent. But from a safety perspective, I'm just gonna suggest to the committee, it's actually not a prudent approach to close up Chaplain. Thank you, Madam Chair. I know I'm over my five minutes.
Thank you for that and being so mindful as well. And thanks for that presentation. Members, do you have any questions of Mr. Bronskill? Okay. Or comments? Yeah, go ahead, Matt. Member Kassen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one question regarding the front yard landscaping. I see that, you know, mostly the original driveway is being maintained in terms of the shape of it. But was any consideration given to reducing the amount of paved area in that driveway area to increase the front yard landscaping and therefore reduce the variance?
Yeah, there was some, thank you, three Madam Chair for the question. There was some consideration to that. The, the, I'm just gonna say three things in response. One is the north-south dimension of the driveway out to Chaplain was actually narrowed. You can see on the site plan in green, um, uh, the existing driveway actually kind of sits where the house footprint is. You can see there's a green square that would have been the existing kind of porch area of the existing house. And so you can see the driveway connect there. So it, it has been tightened up a little bit, which will allow some additional green space. But also in the boulevard, obviously the boulevard space doesn't count. But it's hard, the second thing I'll say, it's hard otherwise to be able to do it and still allow a turning movement. And that's part of what this existing driveway is used for today. So I'm gonna use a hypothetical, if you're coming east on Castlefield and you want to turn into the house, a left turn at Castlefield runs into all of the traffic that is sitting at the stop sign at Castlefield. And it's actually a really difficult movement if that was your left turn in, because you're waiting for a gap and you're actually waiting with the rear of your car just in the intersection at Chaplain for a gap to be created in those cars queuing heading west on Castlefield. So, so your better movement is to turn left on a Chaplain, turn in the driveway at Chaplain. But then the family, including some of the teenage drivers, would like the ability to be able to turn that car around, which is why the existing driveway width is being kept. So that you could actually do essentially a three-point turn on the site. So you could either leave in a forward movement onto Castlefield or a forward movement out to Chaplain. The third thing I would just say, and I think it's appropriate for a condition so the committee see fit to grant, that existing driveway area today does not have permeable pavers, but we would like a condition that would require that to have permeable pavers, just to help with stormwater penetration and improve the condition if we can in that way.
Thank you. And then if you looked at this site overall, the combined sort of front and rear landscaping combined, because I realize it's a kind of an awkward size lot, does it come close to meeting the requirements? If you understand.
It does for the rear, yeah, I do. It does for the rear because there's no variance. I'm going to just, as, there may be some other questions, if I can come back to your question, I'm gonna check some site stats that I have to see if I can put those together for you for the whole lot. The rear yard, for example, there's a requirement for fifty percent to be landscaped open space, and it's actually seventy point four two. So it, it exceeds. And so if I put them together, boy, it's one ninety point three six plus the front yard soft landscape, thirty-four point six two. So two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-six square meters over the entire lot, which has an area of eight to eight point ninety. But I, I don't, I'm not sure I have a figure that isolates the non-house area of the lot, but I'll see if I can find that for you.
Okay, it's not critical. I just thought you might have it. Because it is, I can understand it's hard to achieve it in the front yard when you have a limited frontage across there.
That is true with that narrowing to eleven meters. And, and they have been able to increase a bit in the side yard. And then obviously the rear yard as well has really good landscaping.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions from members?
I just wanna check in. I do know that we have a David Lepowski. I know that it's someone in support, but I think that maybe we should give them a chance to speak. So if there's no further questions, let's pull up David Lepowski, please. If you could state your name.
Okay, can tell me? Can you tell me if you can hear me?
Yeah, I could hear you. Just state your name and address for.
Okay, fantastic. Sure. My name is David Lepowski, L E P O F S K Y. My address is six ten Castlefield Avenue, so we're the property immediately to the east.
Okay, and can you share your thoughts on this property, please?
Okay, we are totally in support of this. The, the owners have discussed their plans and we are completely in support. I wanna focus on two things. One, they're building a third story. I'm actually ecstatic. It's gonna take some of the sunlight that glares on us at points of the day off of us, and we're delighted. But I wanna talk particularly about the driveway and support their plan for the driveway. I walk a lot. I happen to be totally blind. That driveway, both on Castlefield and on Chaplain, are, are points that I use. I use a white cane and I look for cane detectable landmarks. I've been living here for over twenty, for almost twenty years and I use those driveways as navigation points. Please don't change it. The transportation department, I, I don't suspect considered that. I'm gonna add that my daughter is also totally blind, is still learning white cane skills. She's got a lot to learn and also uses those as navigation points. And it would be adverse on all of us if they got rid of one of those. The change in the actual size of the narrowing of the, the one on Chaplain does not bother me at all. The other thing is that this, this driveway is a safety measure for us. For example, if I'm walking along and there's some obstruction on the sidewalk or construction which seems to pop up in our neighborhood. or construction which seems to pop up in our neighborhood, God knows, without any forewarning, I've got a safe route to root around that at the corner. See if I'm coming down Chaplain, coming south on the east side and just loop around my neighbor's driveway, which they're totally open to, and then get back on, onto Castlefield. If there's snow from the street that has been piled up from the, the streets being plowed overnight, before they get a chance to clear the driveway, some, or to clear all of it off or after my neighbors have cleared their driveway, that may be the best, safest navigable route I can also follow using my cane. So we support it entirely, but I want you in weighing that to weigh the concern that that driveway as proposed is a huge benefit for us. And we really ask that it not, not be removed.
Okay, thank you so much for that. And thank you for sharing. Personally, my mom was blind as well, so I totally understand where you're coming from and your personal story. Everyone, do you have any other questions of Mr. Lepowski? All right, there being none, let's get the agent back on, Mr. Bronski. Is there anything that you want to tell us really just finally before we go into committee or decision making?
No, Madam Chair. Just to thank Mr. Lepowski for taking time out of his day to come and speak and support. As you know, that's rare. And then I remain available to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, sure. Sorry. We do have one question that's coming in from Mr. Fazali and that's around the transportation deferral.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thanks for the applicant and supporting leader for their explanation. In, in terms of the transportation report, where they have some concerns and they are asking for deferral, that way they can be satisfied for the requirements. So my understanding is that you wish not go with a deferral and you're not making any changes in terms of the like, the width or any other changes that on transportation report are asking? Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair. That, that is correct. The reason I don't think a deferral is warranted is that, I, I actually would put this down as what I'm going to call a memo to protect precedent. And what I mean by that is if you go under the comments section of the memo, transportation staff do accurately look at the city of Toronto's road classification system. Chaplain is a collector road. Castlefield is a local road. And from my work in the city, it, it is preferred to have access to the lower order road. That paragraph is 100% correct. I don't, I don't take any issue with it. But the issue is that I think if, if they had actually gone out to this lot, seen the narrow width on Castlefield, what they're actually asking to have done as a, through the deferral, is to revise the site plan to take away the safe access out to Chaplain and leave the unsafe access out to Castlefield. And so it's a case where I, I understand the preference of the road classification system. But I don't think it's a preference here that should prevail because it will actually, and Mr. Lepowski is right about this, it will actually result in a much, much worse situation, both for my client and for pedestrians. And I think if I was proposing for the client a new curb cut on Chaplain, I would probably be making a, a different argument to you. But as I noted earlier, other houses, including corner lots, do have driveways out to Chaplain. This one does exist today. And actually through the new house, it's actually being narrowed somewhat, which, which I actually think is a good thing. So no, we're not making any other changes. And I just don't think the deferral would solve anything because both my client and the community would like that Chaplain Crescent access to remain.
And thanks for explaining this. So in your opinion, you're thinking they went ahead with this just looking at the angle of just based on classification that they call Chaplain Crescent as a collector road? And Chaplain, yes, yes, collector road. And that is why they're asking. I understand your point of view when you're mentioning that. If, if it's, it's going to be closed, they're asking you basically close the Chaplain Crescent, right? Whereas.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I totally get that. Have you communicated this? Like, I'm, my understanding is that they're just going ahead with that classification. But you have a point in terms of like safety as well, what you mentioned. Have you communicated that? And also if you could point at, in terms of a site plan and the width, what are your comments?
Sorry, I just missed that last part of your question. Apologies.
If you could comment on the other point that they made in terms of the driveway width, the reduction of that, if you could comment on that as well, that would be great.
Yeah, I can for sure. We, we haven't connected with Mr. Dillon or Mr. Nikolucci. I, I, I'm not sure that we would persuade them. Because again, the way I read this memo is that they are looking at the classification system and, and indicating that this is the way it should be done in the city. In, in terms of the driveway width, so first of all, it's, it's existing, what they're asking to have narrowed. Secondly, it would have an impact unfortunately on the ability to turn a car in that front area. And I do think it's very important here for the family and for the community to have the ability to have front in and front out, if, if I can say it that way. Whereas if you taper up that driveway, it's the existing condition first of all. But you would lose that ability if you tapered it down to 3.8 meters for the entire length of the driveway. I would also note from my review of the neighborhood, you know, I just went just a little up Chaplain looking at what was just to the north on Chaplain in terms of other driveway accesses. If you go just to the, to the north on Chaplain, there's a lovely house that's just to the north. And it's got its, it's not a corner lot, but it's got its driveway out to Chaplain. This is number, I think it's number 570. It's got its driveway out to Chaplain. And it's in fact, a double curb cut driveway that has been fully paved. And I know why it has been. It's so that someone can do a forward motion in off Chaplain and do a forward motion out onto Chaplain, front in, front out. And so if we tapered it here, we'd lose that ability, quite frankly. And so again, I don't, I don't think it's the right way to go. I think the permeable pavers is the right way to improve the existing condition.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Members, any other questions? Yeah, Member Martin?
Hello. Yeah, I just want you to comment on the backyard, the, the proposed cabana. It's one meter from the property line, the east property line is, has, was it considered no variance for it? So I'm just curious as to did that slip through the cracks or is there no variance required? Can you just comment on that, please?
I can. There's, there's no variance required for it. And if I just pull it up for you, three Madam Chair, famous Martin, it's, yeah, it's there at point three of a meter. And if you look on page two of our presentation, it got buried because we included frankly, so many stats. These are the stats for the ancillary structure. And what's, you'll see what's proposed setback to east side lot line, as you've correctly noted, point three. We've included the variance standard there for you, what's allowed, point three. So that is the permitted cabana east side lot line setback.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Any final questions? Okay, there being none, let's take this into committee without any further interruptions. And either we can do some discussions or if someone has a motion to make, feel free to go ahead. Members, we are looking at, you know, six, 16 variances. And there is one forestry, of course, transport is requesting deferral, but you heard from Mr. Bronski, some explanations as to why that's, you know, why, you know, that wouldn't work for them. And proposal of like permeable pavers was also suggested. There were 21 letters of support, including someone who came up to speak to this about their own personal interest in the development of this property. That being said, any comments? Go ahead. Okay, so then maybe we can go for a motion.
I will say that it's a lot of variances. But I think, you know, given the shape of this lot, it, it's understandable why there's so many variances, including that front yard landscaping. And yes, I would like to see, you know, the driveway pavement reduced. But I understand, you know, that the reason why it is that way and the function that that driveway has. And I think that transportation looked at it almost as a regular lot on the street with a, with a single garage and therefore saying 3.8 should be the maximum driveway width, you know. But given that it's a corner lot and they need to maneuver around, I think, I think it's not out of the ordinary and it's existing. So it doesn't offend me quite as much. And so, I mean, I think, as I said, it's a lot of variances. When I first saw it, I was like, whoa. But I think they are relatively minor. And I think that with the support of the neighborhood and nobody really objecting to it, I don't see, and I, I think the transportation's comments are, you know, valid. But I think they have looked at it from a functionality point of view. And generally, they like to reduce the number of accesses onto higher order roads. And I understand why they would do that. But I think in this case, the request is appropriate. So I would be happy to move a motion for approval subject to the driveway being permeable, constructed of permeable pavers. Forestry condition number one. And I think that was it. Is there anything else I'm missing?
Nope, that, that was it. Member Cassin with a motion to approve this application with those conditions, which also include the permeable pavers for the driveway. Can I get someone to second that, seconded by Member Marziani? All those in favor? Hands up. And all those opposed? We've got Member Fazali as well as Member Martin opposing. But I am going to go with the motion. I do believe that this application meets the four tests. And so, Mr. Bronski, your application has been approved with those conditions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the committee.
All right. And so let's move on now to item number 18. Members, item number 18 is 174 Holmes Avenue. And this is a proposal for a pool fence enclosure to install an in-ground pool with associated patio and landscaping and a pergola. Sounds like you should have been doing this at the beginning of summer, but that's great. Better late than never. So let's get the agent out here, the agent, Mr. Paul Guest. Mr. Guest, if you can state your name and address, please, for the record.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, perfectly. If you can state your name and address, please.
Oh. Yeah, it's Paul Guest. I, I work at Betts Pools in Stoville, 5738 Main Street. And I'm the agent for the owner.
All right. So I see that there is three variances, one letter of support. And there is a staff report asking for refusal of this application. So why don't you just, there's no one here to speak to this, the application. Why don't you give us a brief presentation in light of the staff report so that we can see how best we're, we can consider it?
Okay. We're actually, we're dropping variance number three. We're, we're going to go with 51.27% soft skate. So we don't need that variance anymore.
Okay, so variance number two, you're saying? Three, variance number three?
No, three. Yeah.
Has been eliminated. Okay.
That's right, yeah.
Any other changes?
Now, variance number two. Yeah, variance number two, we're, we're, we're going to remove the pergola and the cabana. And we're just, we're just applying, we just want the deck. So we're going to drop the lot coverage from 41.02% down to 35.23%.
35.23%. Okay, so you're eradicating the pergola, et cetera. And so variance number three is now 33.23%. Sorry.
Yeah, it's just that the house were 29.94 and the deck were 5.29. So the total would be 35.23.
Point two, three. Yeah. 35.23%. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that certainly is the situation here. There is no one else to speak to this. Do you all feel? No, nothing for variance number one, right, sir? No changes?
No, we're, we're just, yeah, we like, we just have a, we had a different interpretation of the, the, like, if you look at the back of the house, there's a basement walkout. Now, they're, they're saying that the basement is the first story. So we're putting the deck on the second story, which normally in any house would be the first story desk. So the deck is actually, it's only 1.2, 1.9 meters from the grade to the, to the deck. So there's no issues as far as privacy goes on either side, especially the one with the big hedge. And then the other side, we have a letter of support from. So that's what we're proposing. And it's just like the zoning reviewer said that the basement was actually the first floor. I, I guess because, I don't know whether it's because it's about two feet out of the ground. But anyways, that's what we're, we're putting the, we want to put the deck on a, what we consider the first floor.
Okay. Any other questions from members? Yeah, one question from Member Martin. Go ahead.
You've got law, it looks like they've got lawn between the deck and the patio. How, I can't imagine that your client is going to want to walk through lawn. Can you comment on that, please? Will that be filled in at a later date? And that will change your soft landscaping, obviously, in the backyard.
Well, that, yeah, but we don't, we, that's what's proposed. And he has to keep it there in order to meet the 51%, so.
Okay.
You know, what, what he.
Okay, Member Fazali with another.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. A question for the applicant. Could you provide any examples of similar square meters for the rear deck in your neighborhood with that size?
No, I don't have any in that neighborhood really. But I think the, the reason we have to put the, I guess, like, we're going 1.65 meters from the, because the windows are jutting out. So that's, that's probably about six feet. And then the, the area over by the staircase is for, for a barbecue and for a table and chairs to, to have dinner. So because of the, because of the weird, you know, the window coming out like that, the, the deck has to be adjusted so you can have room for, for, you know, comfortably for a table and chairs to entertain.
So the answer is, sorry to interrupt you, but the answer for the question is that there are no other similar variances or the size of the rear deck in your neighborhood, right? Because on.
I don't know. We, we have done them in other areas, but this is, you know.
And the other part is that.
We don't know what's been done in that area.
Yes. The other part is that the deck approximately seems like 1.9 meters above the ground, correct? Which is a bit concerning in terms of like an overlook and negative impact in the privacy of neighboring. I know there are no oppositions, but we, I don't, I cannot speak about the oppositions if they wanted to register in the future or neighboring future. I'm not sure. But the reality is that the impact on privacy, do you have any solution for that?
Well, I don't, the, the one neighbor with the, the fence going along gave us a letter of support. And the other side has got a hedge of about 10 feet high. So there's no issues there. We could put up, if, if necessary, we can put up some kind of privacy fence on the, on the. So there's no issues there. We could put up, if, if necessary, we can put up some kind of privacy fence on the, on the one side or both sides.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Are you referring that they could put up the privacy screen or you?
No, we could on the, on the, whatever, like, if they, if the neighbor has an issue, we could, we could work with the neighbor. Put up privacy screens on the, the end of the deck.
Okay. Any other questions? Bring this into committee for decision-making now? No other questions coming in? So comments or motion, please? Right now, he's provided a lot. He's also made some quick changes on the fly to sort of accommodate the staff concerns by eliminating variance number three. And, sorry, yeah, variance number.
I was gonna ask you.
Yeah, number three.
Number three, yeah.
The variance changes again. I didn't quite get those.
Sorry, so variance number. Three was eliminated and number two is reduced to thirty-five point two-three percent. Okay, and no other items on there. There is one letter of support. And he's provided as ma- many explanations as, as possible. Yes, member Moseyari.
Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you. I think, I don't have any concern with this application. And I'm happy that the applicant make these adjustments. So I, I'd like to put forward a motion to approve the application as amended. And so variance number two to be thirty-five point three. And variance number three to be eliminated. And since the neighbor is not objecting to the application, I wouldn't include the privacy screen for the variance number one. Wouldn't.
Okay, great. And that could be a private matter. So member from, member, motion from member Marziani to approve this application with those conditions. And so, can I get a second or seconded by member Martin? All those in favor? Okay, unanimously approved. So your application, Mr. Guest, has been unanimously approved with those changes. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Have a great, and a great summer next year. Alright, and so let's move on to item number nineteen. And this is number eight forty-four Duplex Avenue. Members, with this application for Duplex Avenue. It is to enclose the existing front porch and construct new stairs. Members, we have no one to speak to this application. It is five variances and, and that's pretty much it. So let's get the agent out here. Mr. George Tiodosu? Mr. Tiodosu?
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker.
Yes, if you can state your name and address for our records, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is George Tiodosu, two five five Johnston Avenue in Toronto.
Okay, Mr. Tiodosu. I'll ask members if they require a presentation. I don't see anyone requiring a presentation at this time. Do you have anything that you would like to share with us before we take this into committee?
No, other than to say that I spoke with committee planning. And I understand that there's no objection to this project, which involves enclosing an existing porch and building covered landing and stairs. There's no impact on existing tree in the front lawn. So it's a, it's a small request that we're making here today. And we hope that the committee finds it, by the way, it is for approval.
Okay, that's fair enough. Thank you so much for that. Members, do you have any questions of Mr. Tiodosu? If there's being none, let's take this into committee. Can I get a motion, please? There's nothing else here. It's just five variances. Motion from member Marziani.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's a very straightforward application, just enclosure of the front porch. The variances are minor and meet the four tests. So I'd like to make a motion to approve with no condition.
Okay, motion from member Marziani to approve this application without condition, seconded by member Fazili. All those in favor? Okay, Mr. Tiodosu, your application has been unanimously approved without condition. Thank you.
Thank you and good afternoon.
Okay, members, let's move on to, I guess, what's now the four P M session. And as we move along, please let me know, planning staff as well, if a break is needed. So let's move on to item number twenty. Item number twenty is number one hundred Bevdale Road. Please note that this is an application.
Sorry, Madam Chair, we actually have a deferral at four o'clock.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
So let's.
Why don't we, why don't we deal with that first?
Yeah, thank you for the reminder, Deputy Lam. For those listening online, please note that we are now entering the four P M session. We had a bit of, quite a bit of work to do in the latter session, so, I mean, in the former session. So let's, let's find out if there are any items for deferral in the four P M.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have one deferral. It's number twenty-one. The address is two Hawksdale Drive Road.
Okay, so number, item number twenty-one. If applicants can turn, panel members can turn to that application. Two Hawksdale Drive? That's two Hawksdale Road? And let's pull up the person on file here, Nelson Espinola. Mr. Espinola, if you can state your name and address, please?
So my name is Ian Donnell, D O N N E L L. Mr. Espinola is the planner. I am the lawyer. My address is one eight three Simcoe, S I M C O E Avenue in Keswick. And I sent a letter earlier on Thursday indicating we'd be asking for a deferral. We just received the comments from the city and the engineering and transportation, and we'd like an opportunity to answer them. We have letters of agreement from the neighbors, but we want to do this properly. So we'd like to have a deferral so we can answer the questions that were raised and the materials that were just provided.
Okay, fair enough, and thank you for that explanation. Members, there's no one else to speak to this application here today. So unless there's any other questions, can I get a motion on this deferral? Member Martin?
I propose to defer item twenty, one hundred Bevdale Road.
Sorry, it's twenty-one, two Hawksdale Road.
Oh, I'm sorry. Two Hawksdale Road, sorry, deferral to address issues with transportation. And did you say E C S? E C, yeah?
I think it was transportation and just staff reports.
Oh, to address concerns with transportation and the staff report, the planning staff report.
Okay, and so we've got a motion from member Martin to defer this application, sign, e, die, I'm presuming. Seconded by member Kassen. All those in favor? And your deferral request has been approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would just wish to thank Ms. Muziani, your, your technician, who was absolutely fabulous in helping me navigate this deferral request.
She is indeed, and she's one of a few of them who are really hardworking and deserve quite a lot of merit for putting these hearings together. So thank you for that and the acknowledgement. They appreciate, they appreciate it. Okay, so let's move back then. If there's no more else, nothing else. Deputy Lam, we're moving back then to item number twenty, which is one hundred Bevdale Road. So with that, let's pull out, let's get out here, Nicole Vajzar. Ms. Vajzar, are you there? If you can state your name and address? Yeah.
My name is Nicole Visar. My address is two three six Emerson Avenue, and I'm the agent and designer of this project.
Okay, Ms. Visar. Can you, let's just see what we've got here. Members, we've got seven variances, two letters of support. There's nothing else on this file to note. I'm wondering, do you require a presentation? I'm seeing heads shaking, saying no, no presentation is required. Ms. Visar, is there anything else you'd like to tell the committee members before they go into committee for decision-making?
No, I believe the requested variances are minor and I can forego a presentation and answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, if there are no other questions, then let's take this into committee for decision-making. Panel members, can I get a motion? Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you. I think the application is straightforward, in my opinion, and it meets, satisfies the four tests. So I'd like to propose the motion to approve this application. There are no conditions. I do not see if anyone knows of any conditions. Help me out. Otherwise, that is the motion.
Right, motion from member Fazili to approve this application without conditions, seconded by member Marziani. All those in favor? And your application, Ms. Visar, is unanimously approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, everyone, let's take it to item number twenty-two now, which is one twenty-three Bevdale Road. This is an application to construct a new dwelling. Members, it's eight variances. There is forestry condition number one. There's also a staff report of September twelfth, asking that we eliminate variance number three and modify variances eight or refuse it. And then they're also additionally asking that we refuse variances four and seven. There's one letter of support, but there's ten signatures of opposition. Let's, there might be modifications on this, this, this item, this application. So let's call out Mr. Meren Zabzumi. Mr. Zabzuni, if you can come on and state your name and address for the record, please?
Madam Chair, he doesn't appear to be online at this time. Perhaps we can have staff try to reach out to him.
Okay, so as he's not here, for all those waiting to talk to this application, what we're gonna do is we'll get to the next one and we'll come back to it while we reach out to the agent. So panel members, let's turn to item number twenty-three instead. Number twenty-three is one oh nine Bathurst, sorry, one oh nine Parkhurst Boulevard. And this application is to construct a second-story addition, a one-story rear addition, a new garage in the rear yard and removal of an existing garage. Please note, members, that there are five variances on here. There's some advisory comments from Metrolinks. There has been three letters of objection, but I don't have anyone noted here unless there's anyone in the audience to speak against this application. Yeah, not a problem. So Mr. Belcher, Anthony Belcher is the agent. If you can state your name and address for the record, then. Alright, is your mic on, by the way, just to double check that you're?
Is that better?
That's way better.
That's better, good.
Anthony Belcher, you've stated your name and that, just if you could state your address one more time?
Nine hundred Young Street, suite five oh four.
Okay, great. So that's captured on our video. And how about, because, you know, there might be so many letters, you know, of opposition, et cetera, and some of the concerns of the staff. First of all, I can ask you, are you making any revisions to this application?
Yes, we are. So in response to concerns from the owner of two hundred Ramsey Road, we've decided to eliminate variances one and two for the side setbacks for the second-story roof deck. And variance four will be modified to request a smaller roof deck area of twenty point five nine square meters instead of twenty-four point seven four square meters that was on the notice.
Okay, and anything being done to variance seven or that remains the same?
There were only five, so five stays the same.
Sorry, why do I have?
Sorry, can you repeat the variance number four reduction to what?
So variance four will be reduced to a roof deck area of twenty point five nine square meters instead of twenty-four point seven four.
Thank you.
Okay, so teams, have you received that, members? It's elimination of variance one and two, and variance number four is now twenty point five nine meters squares. Sorry, and I kept looking back at the preceding application, so that's where my confusion lay. But I, I understand it now. There is no one noted here to speak to this application, members, with those changes. Do you feel you require a presentation still? Or do you feel like taking this into committee now? Okay.
Maybe just a brief, because there are letter objections, just out of the fairness, just for the public.
A couple letters of objection that they just want to address. So if you can give a brief presentation, that would be helpful.
I'd be happy to. So the owner has already obtained a zoning certificate for the as-of-right additions to the existing bungalow with required onsite parking. He is now seeking variances so he can construct the second-story rear roof deck and a new double garage at the rear of the property. Proposed second-story roof deck would be similar in area to the existing one at one oh seven Parkhurst Boulevard, the property immediately to the west. There's a photo of that deck on page three of my cover letter, which you've probably seen. Like the one next door, the proposed deck would be accessed through bedrooms and therefore used passively. It is not intended for large noisy parties, as one neighbor has suggested. It would be furnished with planters with shrubs and flowers to make an attractive amenity when viewed both from the bedrooms of the house and from the flanking street. As far as I know, no neighbors have raised any concerns about overlook. And in any case, there are no windows on the north-facing side wall of two oh four Ramsey Road, the house to the south. In recent years, this committee has approved second-story roof decks nearby at one nine three Randolph Road, totaling seventeen point six-three square meters and one at forty-six Vanderhoof Avenue with an area of twelve point two square meters. Variances three and five relate to the proposed new garage. Variance three is for the proposed lot coverage of forty-two point two-eight instead of the maximum permitted thirty-five percent. It would consist of thirty-two point nine-nine percent for the house and nine point two-nine percent for the garage. The proposal complies fully with the bylaw requirements for landscaped areas in the front side and rear yards. Variance five is for the side setback requirement from the flanking street, Ramsey Road, to the ancillary building, which would be one point eight seven meters less than the minimum required six meters. So my cover letter provided twenty-two examples of properties in the neighborhood where variances were approved by this committee for lot coverages greater than forty percent. Most of those properties have detached garages. Of them, five are within one block of the subject property and have detached garages on corner lots. Of those five nearby corner properties, three have double garages. And one of those at one five seven Parkhurst has a double garage immediately beside and slightly forward of the front wall of an adjacent house on Sutherland Drive. So the same situation as we are proposing. I also provided photos of twelve examples of existing double garages on corner lots in the Lee Side neighborhood. And many of those garages are also beside the front walls of adjacent houses on flanking streets. Can we go to, actually, this one is, is helpful. But the existing site plan drawing, X three, in the drawings that I submitted. So not in the cover letter, but in the, in the drawings. It's page nineteen of the P D F. Almost there. There we are. So at present, the subject property has an, has an existing two-meter-high fence, one meter away from the city sidewalk within the Ramsey Road street allowance. It encloses the rear yard of the. one meter away from the city sidewalk within the Ramsay Road street allowance. It encloses the rear yard of the subject property. There is also an existing nine-square-meter shed within the street allowance just behind that fence. The existing attached garage at the rear of the existing house has a setback less than zero point five meters from Ramsay Road, and the existing house has a setback less than two meters from Ramsay Road. The streetscape described by the Ramsay neighbors to the south as being uniform is in fact already varied where it meets the subject property by the tall fence, the shed, and the east wall of the existing house. There's also an existing double curb cut on, on Ramsay serving the existing single garage, but also a licensed boulevard parking space beside it. There will be no reduction in the number of on-street parking spaces if the double curb cut is relocated further south to serve the proposed new double garage. So can we go back to the page you were at previously of my cover letter, page four? Okay, so that top drawing, that one, uh, shows the view looking north from two oh four Ramsay towards the existing fence on the property line and the proposed garage. Most of the proposed two point seven five high garage wall will be concealed behind the existing two-meter fence. As of right, one point three meters of the garage can extend in front of the front wall of two oh four Ramsay. Only one point eight seven meters of the garage would be within the minimum required six-meter setback. So you can see that in that top cross-section drawing. The bottom drawing shows the proposed streetscape along Ramsay. There would be a separation distance of four point zero nine meters between the proposed garage and the house to the south at two oh four Ramsay. This large separation distance, plus the deliberate low eve height of the garage and the screening by the fence, I believe, will minimize any impact. So there was some photographs of the side lot of, the side yard of the house to the south.
We'll ask you to summarize now.
I'm finished.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so do we have any questions? Uh, Mr. Belcher.
Through you, Madam Chair, just have a question of clarification. You said that you amended the application after speaking to the neighbors. Was that two oh four Ramsay Road?
We received the, the letter of objection this week from that neighbor who felt that the roof deck was too close to this, the flanking street Ramsay Road. So we decided to comply with the required setback for the roof deck.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you have any other questions from members? Okay, there being no one else to speak to this application, let's take it into committee. If there are no other comments or discussion, can we entertain a motion for this application and noting the changes that were made by the applicant here today? Yeah, oh, sorry, Member Maziari, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think with the amendment that the applicant is making, it's quite a supportable application. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this application as amended, so variance number one and two to be eliminated and variance four to be twenty point five nine square meter, so with no other condition.
Great, thank you, Member Maziari, with a motion to approve this application with those conditions, seconded by Member Cassin, and all in favor, your application has been unanimously approved with those conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you and have a great day. So, members, is it okay we can go back to item number twenty-two? Okay, and so item number twenty-two is one-twenty-three Bevdale Road. We were trying to get the agent, let's see if he's there, Mr. Marin Zubzumni. Mr. Zamzuni, if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. I do believe there was a mix-up. I'm actually Alexander Overholt, and I believe I have been registered to speak on this application for one-twenty-three Bevdale. I did just receive a call, I believe, from Sam who did assist me in, in this, uh, this slight hiccup.
Okay.
So again, Alexander Overholt, from eleven forty, the Queensway to Tobago.
All right, thank you for that clarification and glad to have you on here with us. And we do have a couple of folks speaking to this application. Members, just before he begins, uh, a presentation, just to let you know, this application does have five variances. There is a Metrolinks advisory comment, sorry. This application has eight variances, sorry. One forestry condition, number one, um, uh, the set, the staff report, of course, asked for variances number three to be eliminated and variances number eight to be modified, and to refuse variances four and seven. While there is one letter of support, there's ten signatures of opposition. Sir, can you tell me if you're making any changes to the application and if you can state what those are?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, that is correct. Um, we have worked closely with the planning department to eliminate the building height variance, um, which was initially proposed to be ten point eight four meters. We have now eliminated the height variance and.
So variance number three has been eliminated? Sorry, which variance is this? We just need you to state what the variance is for the record and what's happening?
It's the, uh, building height variance.
Okay.
We initially were proposing a height variance of ten point eight four meters and we have reduced it to ten meters.
Okay, so.
We now comply with the building height.
Number three has been eliminated. Any other changes?
Correct. Um, variance number four, uh, the main wall height, initially was nine point two meters, what was proposed, and we have reduced it to eight point nine five meters.
So variance number four is now eight point nine five meters? Okay, any other changes?
Variance number seven, the, uh, proposed platform at the second story, the area of the platform has been reduced from thirty-two point three six square meters to twenty-six point five five square meters.
Okay, so variance number seven has been changed to twenty-six point five five meters. Any other changes?
One last change, Madam Chair, and that is variance number eight. We have reduced the main pedestrian entrance height from originally being proposed to be two point two nine meters. It is now one point five nine meters from established grade.
All right, variance number eight has now been reduced to one point five nine meters. Thank you for all of those changes. We do have, uh, someone, a couple of folks here to speak to this application, so why don't you provide us with a brief presentation on the merits of your case?
Of course, we did submit a presentation to the portal. If you can kindly pull that up, that'd be highly appreciated.
Okay, you can.
Yes, I think, yeah. There is a presentation just below that.
Go ahead.
As you mentioned, we are proposing a three-story, single-family, modern dwelling that now has seven variances associated with it. I do want to make known that the first story is indeed actually the basement, and this is due to the relationship between the grade and the property and the elevation of the basement slab. Our proposal has no front or rear yard setback variances, no length or depth variances, and we've eliminated the height variance. When we designed this project, um, we want to ensure that what we are proposing follows suit with what has been previously approved in the local area. As I mentioned before, our initial submission had the eight variances, and we worked very closely with community planning to eliminate the one variance and reduce the severity of the three others, which is the main wall height, pedestrian entrance height, and the platform height. I have a few comparables that I do would like to bring forward that, um, acts as precedent as why we have designed our structure in the way it is. For our side yard setback, uh, for our side yard setbacks, um, we're proposing one point two two meters on one side and one point five two meters on the other, where one point eight meters is required. Looking at what was approved back in the day for forty-three Bevdale, they were approved for one point two meters and, and one point five meters, which we do are slightly greater of. Looking at fifty-nine Bevdale Road, um, similar circumstance where they were approved for one point two meters and one point five meter side yard setback, where one point eight meter was approved. I do believe what we are proposing is in correlation and relates to exactly what has been approved previously. Looking at our main wall heights, um, due to the modern design of the house where we are trying to conceal the pitched roof in the rear, and due to the established grade in the front, our main wall height is indeed a variance. Now, looking at what has been approved for forty-nine Bevdale in the past, they were approved for a main wall height of nine point one three meters. Our request of eight point nine five meters is indeed lower than that. Additionally, um, across the street at one-twenty-two Bevdale, they were approved for a main wall height of nine point zero six meters. With that building being located directly across the street, we do believe that our proposal relates to what has been approved for that structure as well. What you see here is indeed some other comparables in the local area within five hundred meters of, um, our subject property of main wall heights that are similar to our proposal. Another variance we are looking to pursue is the number of stories as well. Um, we are proposing a three-story structure, um, when indeed two stories is permitted. Here you see a couple examples, um, of what has been previously approved in the area for three-story structure. When speaking with planning, because we now comply with the building height variance, they were not concerned of the amount of stories we are proposing within our development. Our max main pedestrian entrance height, of course, has been reduced to one point five nine meters, where one point two meters is indeed requested. Um, there are a few examples in the local area, for example, three seven six, three seven eight, and three eighty Horsham Road, which has been approved for main entrance heights of one point nine nine meters. So we do believe what we are asking here is within reason, for sure. I do want to bring attention to the concerns the neighbors have brought forward. I did read the letter of objection and I do understand their concerns. Having a previous main building height of ten point eight four meters is indeed quite large and could be quite imposing to the local area. With us reducing our building height to ten point zero meters, we do believe that concern has been reduced. There was concerns of privacy as well, um, but looking at the site plan within the submitted drawings, there are a fair share of shrubbery that is quite high along the property lines that I do believe assists in concealing any privacy concerns that the neighbors adjacent to us, uh, may have. That's all I have for you today.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. Members, do you have any questions? Mr. Overholt? At this time, okay. Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll hear, uh, the other, uh, folks who are here to speak to the application, and perhaps that might, uh, bring about some questions. So let's start first with Andre Lamy. Andre Lamy?
If they're not in person, Madam Chair, perhaps we can go on to, uh, the next.
Sure, is there anyone in person to speak to this application? I don't see it. So Jean-Luc Pilliprat? Is Jean-Luc Pilliprat here?
It's Sandra Pilliprat.
Yeah, sure, if you can state your name and address for our records, please.
Sandra Pilliprat. My address is one-twenty-one Bevdale Road. We're just the house north of the proposed new house.
Okay, great, and what are your concerns today?
My concerns are the side yard setback. They're, what, they're wanting to narrow the, the, the side yard setback, and I think it would make it too narrow and it would block light from our property. I, I think they're doing something about that though, aren't they?
Well, we'll see. I mean, we'll give him a chance to respond and, and he did do some elimination of, uh, and, and some modifications of variances, um, but he will indeed speak to it. Are the side yard setbacks your only concern? Is there anything else that you're concerned about?
We're concerned, sorry, we had a letter, but, but a lot of the issues were addressed in the letter. Another concern is the platform at the back. I'm just wanting to understand, it's gonna go up from the second floor and how big is it gonna be?
Six times, too much.
Okay, so the platform at the back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the front elevation, the front elevation too, with the steps going up, I think it's gonna be quite high. I don't think it really keeps in, in, in to, in respect to the rest of the neighborhood.
Right, so he did make some changes to that, which he'll speak to as well, um, but the side yard setbacks are variances one and two, and I don't think I saw changes to that, but we'll ask him. Is there anything else before we move on to the next speaker?
Well, the height, the height of the front and the, and the side walls, but I think he spoke to that, saying he was gonna lower them.
Yes, that's variance number, um, three and four. So yes, he is.
Yeah, from what we, I'm going back, sorry, I'm going back to the, the platform again. I'd like, I think it's six times the size that is supposed, that is supposed to be. I'm just afraid if it's a second-story platform and it's that big, there's gonna be parties and, and, and privacy issues in our own backyard.
Right, he did reduce the platform to twenty-six point five five meters, square meters, but we will, we will, uh, touch base with him on, on that.
If we base it on what's in, what we received from the city, I think it's six times bigger than the, than the, it's allowed.
Okay, well, let's ask him, uh, you know, about that. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um, members, do you have any questions of, uh, Ms. Pilliprat? Okay, there being no questions, let me, uh, now turn it over to see if an Andre Lamy is there online?
Through you, Madam Chair. I tried to call and I got, um, a voice message.
Okay, so we'll consider them not present then? There's ample time to sort of reach out and give, uh, them a chance. So they're not there and there's no one in here to speak, uh, so no one else to speak to this application. I'll invite Mr. Overholt to come back and to address, um, the concerns of, uh, the Pilliprats.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank the neighbors for coming forth and speaking on their concerns. Regarding the side yard setbacks, I do understand that they are variances, but if their concern is the effect the shadow the structure may have on their property, a reduction of sixty centimeters on the one side and fifty, or forty-eight on the other, I think we would actually have little effect on the, the shadow play it does have on the property. If any concerns do relate to perhaps, um, stormwater management because of the excessive side yard setbacks, we still have a lot of ample room to ensure that proper stormwater management can occur and side yard swales are developed. Um, and looking at the precedent of previously approved projects, um, what we are looking here has been approved exactly on this street as well. And we do believe a side yard setback of five feet on the one side and four feet on the other still provides a lot of ample room for any circulation that may need to occur alongside the property. Referring to her, uh, concern regarding the rear platform, it, the rear platform does come off the, I guess in this case, the second story, which is the main living space, uh, adjacent to the kitchen. If her concern is, happens to do with potential parties and noise and privacy, I do understand that. The family here is a, a young family with very young kids. Um, I don't believe parties will be occurring for the next sixteen years. But we have altered our drawings to include, one, the reduction in the platform size, as mentioned in the, the staff report, as well as introducing a privacy wall alongside the right side yard, uh, property line, which is, no, attached, yeah, attached to, to platform, but on the right side of the property. So if there are any concerns with privacy, it will be negated due to this privacy screen. In addition to the comment I did make earlier, there are some existing shrubbery you can see slightly there on the site plan that can also assist with the, um, privacy concerns. And regarding the height of the structure, we did reduce the height to be reduced from ten point eight four meters to ten meters. And of course, the main wall height is a technical variance associated with the established grade and the modern architecture we are proposing here. It's, the structure and front facade is actually quite similar to, I believe, forty-nine Bevdale, which if you do scroll down, you will see a photo of what, of the structure and how it actually looks quite similar to ours. There you go on the bottom left. I do hope that, um, I have addressed her concerns and, and if, if there are any more concerns, I, I'd definitely be happy to, to hear them.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, do you have any questions of Mr. Overholt at this time? Member Maziari?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have actually two questions. Uh, my first question is about the amended variance. My first question is about the amended variance number eight that is reduced to one point five nine. Is it gonna change the height of the first floor, or it's just for the portion of the entrance? And my second?
It's the?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
My apologies. Number you, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Then I'll ask the second one, yeah. Go ahead, please, respond, and then I'll ask the second one.
The, we have introduced a sunken foyer within the first floor. So we do have moderate ceiling heights, you know, ten foot in the first and nine foot in the second. So the height of this, these, the first-floor ceiling was not reduced, just the entrance height itself. Of course, in the basement, this does have a negative effect by making the space underneath unusable. But that is a sacrifice the homeowner is looking to or happy to achieve.
Thank you, I think my main concern is that your rear deck is actually, when I look at the back elevation, is actually on the second floor, because your basement is almost at grade. And I understand the bylaw about like platforms, maximum area to be four square meter for upper decks, but to me, this is like a second, second-floor deck. And the other question is, on your basement floor plan, I can see that space underneath the deck is marked as unexcavated, but it shows a concrete wall around it. So how is it being used? Is it like a space for future expansion, or?
Um, oh, no.
Because this is basically literally a grade, and this is, this is, this is an empty space that is actually, it's like a building under the, under the deck.
Yeah, I believe there was initial discussion to make this a wood structure, but it was made with hesitation from the homeowner due to aesthetics. We feel like the concrete foundation walls just presents more of a modern architecture we're looking to achieve here. And if we were to excavate that space under there, I do believe we'd be flagged with a building length and depth variance, which we're trying to comply, well, we are complying with the length and depth, which is why there's been no desire to have it excavated.
Okay, so you're saying it's just because of the aesthetic of the building that you're doing that?
That is correct, and if I was to speculate, I believe it being concrete already, it makes it for an easier pour on site with the trades. But I can't speak on the management of the builder. But that is correct, it's just aesthetics. We want to be able to have brick attached to it to make obviously more aesthetic rather than just, you know, pressure-treated timber. And obviously with the brick being adhered, we do need a structure to adhere it to, so the concrete is the first choice we made forward with.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
Very welcome.
Member Fazili?
Through you, Madam Chair, thank you. One clarification question first. For variance number eight, I'm not sure if I've heard you wrong. Did you mention one point nine five, or did you mention one point five nine?
One point five nine.
Okay, thanks for that.
No problem.
And also, when I'm looking at the staff report, yes, variance number three and eight, three you eliminated, I can see that, you mentioned, and variance number eight, you followed the report. In terms of variance number four and seven, I still have a little bit of concern on variance number four. You reduced it to eight point ninety-five. And also variance number seven, requesting for refusal, you reduced it to twenty-six point fifty-five. I'm hearing from the neighbor in terms of like overlook, privacy of the deck. So I'd like to hear, how would you justify that this situation wouldn't affect negatively the neighbor? With?
I mean, I definitely.
With the reduction that you already mentioned, because I'm more leaning towards the staff report, but your numbers that you have shared are the reduction, but in my opinion, it still has some room. So I've heard the neighbors, the neighbor and the letters are there, justifications, I would like to hear more justification to satisfy the neighbor's concern in terms of overlook, privacy, and so on. I think it's a valid, there are valid points.
It's a very valid point, and I do understand where their concern comes from. When we brought forth this discussion with community planning, our first solution was to reduce to a usable area that the homeowner was happy to. I do believe she plans to install a bunch of garden beds on top of here, rather than her backyard as accessibility is a bit of concern to her, hence the elevator inside the structure. We did move forward with introducing a privacy screen alongside the one elevation of the platform in the rear, and we believe that the use of this privacy screen will be able to eliminate any privacy concerns as, one, the platform projects past the rear elevation of the neighboring structure. So if we introduce this privacy screen, there's no way for them to look into the rear yard. I believe, yeah, the revisions and revised plans will indicate this.
Yeah, member Martin with a question?
So I'm concerned about this platform as well, because it looks like it's eight, it looks like it's maybe two point, two point six meters or two point seven meters off the finish, the, I guess, what is the finished grade? Which is not really a basement, it's, you've got a three or four, is it a three-story? Yeah, three-story building here. I think that it's excessive as a first-floor deck, and can you not, or platform, I should say? And I think it would be better serving the neighborhood if you could why, maybe put a smaller platform there and then bring the people down to finished grade to have their platform. I, you know, you could put a four-meter square, you know, to, to be able to walk out of the sliding glass door and then have some stairs down. The other concern I have is, I don't understand this brick extension that is holding up the platform. To me, that's a small building extension. I, what is the floor, is there a floor? What is the material underneath that? To me, it's like a little building extension, so can you comment on that, please?
Of course, it is a concrete structure, so it is built with concrete ten-inch foundation walls, finished with the brick veneer. On top is a supported, is a concrete slab that will sit on grade as there will, is unexcavated underneath. And as I mentioned earlier, the choice of just using brick is strictly aesthetic, as we do believe actually if this was a perhaps deck or wood structure, this building would actually appear to be taller, as you would see more of the first-floor structure below.
It, I mean, to me, because it's at least two point four meters, is it not, from finished grade to the platform?
That is correct, yes, it's to provide amenity space for the first floor.
That's like a typical basement height.
Yes.
So I don't understand why it wasn't included in your, your depth of building, your length of building, should say.
That's because the space underneath is unexcavated, it is uninhabitable, unused, and based off the interpretation of the bylaw in our discussions with the zoning department and community planning, because there is no habitable space underneath, it is unexcavated, it does not count towards the depth and length of the structure.
Okay, thank you.
But I do understand your concern how, from a mass, from a standpoint of just massing, it does look like a projection, which it is, but it is solely outdoor amenity space that projects outwards, not interior habitable space.
Does that help? Yeah? Okay, any other questions of Mister Overholt? Quite a bit of information to hear. So it's, it's gonna be up to your interpretation now. You've heard of the changes that he's made. While there is some support, there seems to be quite a number of folks who are not in favor of it. But he has met the staff report, forestry condition applies, of course. Partially because, yes, he hasn't met everything that the staff asked, so consider that. But he's provided some explanations for all of that. So now it's up to each of you to interpret based on the perspectives that you bring to this committee. So I'll open it up, now we're into committee and there's to be no more feedback. If, you know, you would like to say anything, if not, go ahead with a motion, I welcome anyone. Member Maziari?
I can, I can start and my colleagues can add more. I am happy that the applicant make, making some adjustment to the variances and variance three, four, and eight, amendments and the other variances are supportable. My only concern is variance number seven. I don't, I don't believe it's, it's a first-floor deck, and with the way that it's treated architecturally, I think it's like a building extension. And I cannot support it, I agree with the staff report that it's a second-floor deck, so I, I cannot support that variance, and I would refuse that.
Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair, thanks, Mister Maziari. I think I have similar concerns. I also, while I understand the variance number four, which there was some reduction in it, like a side exterior main wall, the height of it, I think the overall, the impact of that still to compare to the adjacent properties, there are impacts. Even though variance itself could be this reduction, yes, fine, but the overall impact, I still have the issue with it. So I'm, I'm ready to make a motion if there are no other comments. Yes, I think Miss Martin.
I just want to comment that I concur with Meddi that I think we should eliminate variance seven.
Okay, member Fazili with the motion?
So I, I propose, I forward the motion to approve the application with the following revision. So, so based on, I go, I go basically with the staff board, I totally agree with it. So elimination of the variance number three, that, they already revised that, so that's good. And I would refuse variance number four, variance number seven, and number eight, it was revised to one point fifty-nine. So I could read it again if it's helpful, but if.
I've got that.
Yes, perfect.
Yep.
Also, they're subject to condition, forestry condition number one.
All right, a motion from?
That's my motion.
Member Fazili to approve this application subject to forestry condition number one, to variance number one being eliminated, as well as variance number four and seven being eliminated, and variance number eight being reduced to one point five nine meters. Can I? Sorry. Yeah, that's what I said, variance number four and seven to be refused.
You said eliminated.
Sorry, okay, so. Refused, sorry. It's the. Yeah, that's what I, but let's, let's be proper with it so that there's no confusion. It's being refused. Yeah, so variance number three has been eliminated, and variance number four and seven have been refused. Variance number eight is now one point five nine meters. And that's Mister Fazili's motion. Can I have a second or four that seconded by member Martin? All those in favor? And all those opposed? And you're leaving me now with, what would you do differently? Would you?
I can explain, I think I, I don't have any problem with variance number four, because it's a flat roof, and the height of main wall is a result of the flat roof, so I, I would support that, I don't have any problem.
All right, so I, I will, I will not go with the original motion, and then, so that fails, and I'll ask for a new motion.
Yes.
Member Maziari?
Yeah, I can make a motion to approve this application as amended, variance number three to be eliminated, variance four reduced to eight point nine five, variance seven to be refused, and variance eight to be reduced to one point five nine meter.
And subject to forestry number one?
Subject to forestry, yes.
Okay, and so that motion, I think I don't need to repeat it, it's approved with those changes. And only variance seven will be refused this time, and seconded by member Cassin. All those in favor? All those, oh, so we've got three now in favor, and all those opposed? Member Fazili opposed, your application has been approved, Mister Overholt, with those changes. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members, I appreciate your time today.
You too, okay. Members, please do let me know whenever you need a quick break, otherwise. Okay, a five-minute break for a water break, we'll come back in five minutes, please. Okay, a five-minute break for a water break, we'll come back in five minutes, please. Okay, everyone, if you can put your cameras back on, we're back. And we're ready to roll. Yeah. Alright, so, we're ready to go, members, uh, we're back, and uh, thanks everyone for their patience, it's been a longer day, but uh, still bear with us, we'll try to get through these as quickly as possible. Um, let's move on to item number twenty-four. Item number twenty-four is sixteen curtling place. Um, and please note that there is no one to speak to this application. It is one variance, uh, there's a staff report with just a one simple condition. Um, and so, uh, can I get the agent out, uh, Douglas Pateman, please? In person, oh, there you go.
Hi, good afternoon.
You've been waiting a while, yes, Mr. Pateman, if you can state your name and address for our records, please.
Yeah, of course, it's Doug Pateman, and I'm at one eighty-eight Avenue Road here in Toronto.
Alright, great. Members, given what we've got here, do you require a presentation? Mr. Bateman, there is nothing else, Pateman, there is nothing else that uh, is required off, off a pr- as a presentation, is there anything you wanna say as a final thought before we take this into committee?
Yeah, I'd, I had one comment, um, I had some difficulty getting hold of uh, of city staff. Um, I appreciate the site-specific bon- zoning bylaw allows the um, the canopies to be the full width I would, of the projections, and I would just like to note that uh, as written, the staff recommendation is to allow the maximum projection up to two meters, which is satisfactory, our projection is one point nine eight. But I'd also like to note, uh, either the width, to note in the condition that they're allowed to go up to the two point seven five as required, or to be the full width of the covering area. Um, I can bring that up in the zoning review, where it specifically states that uh, uh, the canopy and awning projections may encroach um, to the extent as the platform it is covering. I'd just like that noted in the, the final decision that we can ex- also extend to the platform as it's covering.
Okay, so if we could probably bring up the planning staff report.
Yeah.
Um, just their recommendations, and so that we could take a look at what it says. And eh, just sort of uh, pull that up a little bit more closely, so that we could all read the recommendations aspect. Magnify that some more. And uh, so you're saying that, what, what exactly are you saying would be helpful uh, to you?
Yeah, either, either note in the recommendation, or the, in the committee's uh, approval, that uh, we can go to a full width of two point seven five meters, which is the, the widest canopy that we're proposing. Or note that's exactly how it's in, in the bylaw, that uh, the projections may encroach to the same extent as the platform it is covering.
Projections may encroach.
So, Ma- Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I'm hesitant to add additional wording.
Okay.
Above and beyond, either he complies with the bylaw, so he's okay, all other things, or he gets his variance approved.
Right.
That's it.
So approved without any conditions of uh, staff?
No, no, I'm hesitant to add any more additional wording as suggested by the applicant.
Yeah.
Right, because I don't know what the implications are, so either he gets his variance approved.
Right.
And he builds what he wants, or he's subject and up- and complies with all other variances.
Through you, Madam Chair, can we just pull up the uh, variance, the notice? Because I believe the wording that you're looking for is in the no- yeah. Like the wording there covers, I think, what you're trying to achieve. The uh, to the same extent as the platform it's covering.
Exactly.
So if the variance is granted for that.
Hmm.
You should be covered.
Okay.
Right? Okay.
So, um, through you, Madam Chair, one question, so, um, in other words, if we were to approve this with the condition what it is mentioned in the staff report, are you okay with that? Literally exactly same way that it's mentioned on a staff report.
If it's mentioned in the staff report, um, we'll go away and get further client instructions, but as it's written in the notice, that's what we would prefer to the, the full extent.
So the answer to the question of what I shared is no?
No.
Yeah, no.
So what he's saying is?
With that.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, I.
I'm repeating my question again. If I were to propose a motion, for example, to approve this with the condition that it is mentioned on the staff report, which says canopy and awning projection may encroach into a required minimum building setback to a maximum extent of a two point zero meters. Are you complying with that, are you okay with that? That's just a question.
I, I, I could go on, li- when, when you ask, while, I, I appreciate the, the committee's expertise, um, we could comply with that, but the, the, as the site zoning bylaw permits the maximum encroachment, protect the, the, the uh, what's the exact wording, my goodness, I'm sorry about that, to the same extent as the platform it is covering. Um, I just want that wording in, in the.
Yeah, I do not have a zoning bylaw in front of me to check for the exact words. And when you are sharing that for me, um, I lean towards what it is mentioned on a staff report. If it was mentioned, literally the wording that you said, I would, I could verify, you understand where, where I'm coming from, right? Just have to be able to verify, so that's, that is just my comment.
I just, I just wanna comment, I understand where you're coming from, because I'm looking at the site plan, and your depth of, um, you wanted to make sure, uh, are you going any um, deeper than one point nine eight or any, or extending out any further?
No, that's the maximum extent.
But you're going wider, so in one instance, you've got two point seven five meters, so you don't wanna be limited to, if it's interpreted.
Right.
Exactly, that, thank you.
Yeah, I get that, so.
So in other words, it, it would be approving it um, minus the staff conditions as uh, the deputy secretary treasurer had indicated. Right.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay.
Want me to make a motion?
Absolutely, go ahead, go for it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve um, the variance, you know, for, oh, I'm so sorry, um, sixteen curtling place, to uh, be tied to the site plan, and to um, approve the variance, um, as requested, thank you.
Okay, so motion uh, from member Martin to approve uh, this application, uh, tying it to the site plan. And that's it, can I have a second or for that? Seconded by member?
I'm sorry, I just need to clarify, uh, which site plan are we tying it to?
Uh, we're.
The one attached to the, or submitted to committee, is that?
Yes.
Okay. A zero three, zero, A dot zero zero three. Site plan.
Is that okay, staff?
Yeah. So tying it to that, can I get a second or? Seconded by member Cassin, all those in favor? And those are, sorry, all, everyone's in favor? Great, so it's been unanimously approved, thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone, have a great evening.
Alright, great, so let's move on now to item number twenty-five, everyone. And item number twenty-five, um, is number seven forty-two Glen Grove Avenue. Uh, please note uh, that uh, this application is to construct a new detached dwelling. Members, there's no one else to speak to this application. Um, there are eight variances, there's a forestry condition number three. There is a staff report that's asking that variances number two, three, five, six, and seven are modified or refused it. So, let's bring the agent out, and he's here already, Mr. Andrew Palumbo, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good, actually, we're in the evening now, good evening, Madam Chair, uh, members of the committee and committee of adjustment staff. My name is Andrew Palumbo of Ian Hall Planning Limited, and I am the agent for seven forty-two Glen Grove Avenue, and my address is thirty-eight Betty Nagel Street in Toronto.
Okay, great, now let's start off with seeing if there's any modifications that you wanna make.
Well, and I, I can clarify right away, I could just give some quick context, um, with respect to the, it's actually revised public notice that was sent out with the variances that are outlined in that planning staff report. So, that is what's before the committee today. Yeah, those are all, so, all we agree basically, and just to be, give full disclosure to this committee, um, and in the spirit of giving, being completely upfront, uh, my client started off this project designing his quote-unquote dream home, but I, I was very clear and explained to him, the whole idea of making a submission, and then being willing to work with both planning staff and potentially any uh, nearby neighbors, uh, to work on any potential concerns or issues that that may have. Surely enough, uh, planning staff did re- um, identify some issues with the proposed setbacks in the original application. Setbacks, main wall heights, overall building height, and as a result, the uh, the lot coverage. So, again, my, and my client was more than willing to work with uh, city planning staff, and what's before this committee today is, um, are, sorry, are the variances that appear on the revised public notice that was issued, I believe on September twelfth, and that is part of the, it is issued on the AIC. So, those, uh, if I, if you'd like me to run through those, I can, but uh, they are on the public notice that was issued.
Okay, so I'm a little confused, you're saying that um, it's, it's already been revised, but you're saying September twelfth, but the staff report is saying September nineteenth.
Oh, they're, they issued their, which is actually confusing to me, because we basically got the notice issued in time. I'm not sure if committee of adjustment staff can speak to that, but that definitely happened uh, before the hearing.
We have the September twelfth, um, public notice.
Uh, so the current, exactly, and the current plans before the committee, they reflect what is in that staff report in terms of the revisions that were made.
Okay, so can you uh, state, because, I mean, let me just take a look right here. Um, they're asking you to uh, revise variances number two, three, five, six, and seven, so variance number two, we've got, you know, an east side yard setback of point nine eight five meters.
Eight, that is god, that has been increased to one point four, same with the west side.
Okay, so can you then go through each of them, is what I think, wait.
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, there's a revised notice. So, in the package.
Apologies, the revised notice would normally go on the very beginning of your agenda. It happened to be, so, give us a second, we'll pull up the revised agenda, sorry, the revised uh, notice. You can follow it along, it's underneath the first public notice. If you wanna follow along on your package. Yeah.
Okay.
But just to make it clear and transparent, we'll also put it up on the screen.
Sure.
And then the agent can perhaps go through one more time the changes, just to verify.
Absolutely.
If there is any additional changes that needs to be done, as reflected in the staff report.
So with these revised, the revised plan, perhaps you could tell us the changes that came about in this revised plan, one by one?
Yeah, I will go through them, and I'll, they definitely correspond to the notice that was, that is in the agenda package, but I'll basically go through each of them, so. Variance is number three and four, there is a required side yard setback requirement of one point eight meters for both the east and the west side yard. That's a, a one point eight meters, both the west, which is number, variance number three, and the east, um, sorry, uh, yes, uh, variance number two, which is the east side yard setback, and variance number three, which is the west side yard setback, that is now one point four meters.
Okay.
Where previously it was just below a meter.
Yes.
Uh, the next variance, uh, variance number five. The lot coverage has now been proposed to this committee for approval today is forty-four point four percent. That was reduced from previously forty-six. And variances six and seven, as a result of basic, and with cooperative dialogue with planning staff, and dropping the dwelling basically about two feet, the result is a variance for the, the proposed height of the building is the result is variance for the proposed height of the building is now ten point two meters. And the proposed side main wall heights as per variance number seven is eight point two meters. So these, on the revised notice, this is the reflection of discussions with planning staff leading up to this hearing.
Okay, perfect. So there is no other changes sort of to be made. You've met the planning staff report.
That's correct. I'm a hundred percent confident that the revised notice before you today is a direct reflect... It addresses all of the items identified in the planning staff report.
Right.
Because these are items that we discussed with them prior to this hearing.
Forestry number three condition still applies.
Yes.
You're aware of that.
Yes.
Members, do you require still a presentation of any sort, or do you have any other questions?
I just have a question, Madam Chair. The reducing the height of the building in the side main walls, did that not affect the main pedestrian entrance?
That is still...that still remains as is, just because it's a raised entrance.
Okay.
That's an owner preference, and again, that was one of those things where, because it remained as it was, we were open to having dialogue with planning staff if they had an issue with it, and would have revised at that time if we felt it was an issue. And I did submit a bit of a photo inventory and a planning rationale. There are other examples directly on the street just to the west that show similar dwellings that do have a bit of an elevated main pedestrian entrance when you look at it from the street. Not exactly the same, but that same similar look and feel when you're looking at the property from the streetscape.
So are there any stairs internally in the foyer? To mitigate height, or no, it's all on the outside?
I believe it's all...my understanding is it's all on the outside.
I mean, the floor plans are kind of scant, so I guess they don't really show it. Okay.
My understanding is it's all on the outside, but if anything comes up through the building permit submission, it would unfortunately be flagged then, and we'd have to come back here, but I believe it's just the outside.
Yes, Member Martin?
Can you provide some rationale for...with planning staff, how you came to forty-four point four percent for the lot area? Lot coverage?
Oh, I could definitely explain that. I was going to go through a brief presentation, but for that...no, no, for that number specifically, I think, and I'm just gonna...so I have it right in front of me. It is important to point out that 5.3% of that forty-four percent actually does apply to the rear platform. Thirty-nine point one percent is the actual main dwelling. So on that basis alone, it's not like it's the full dwelling that requires the forty-four. The thirty-nine point one percent for the actual main dwelling itself, that's a lot more in line with other approvals in this area. So because it's just that 5.3% that applies to that rear platform, that's what's triggering that additional coverage. Because anything, I understand it, there's a provision in the bylaw that if you're above 5%, that's where you actually have to count that deck encroachment as part of the coverage.
Oh, interesting. Okay, thank you.
And again, they actually did not raise...planning staff, that was one thing we actually...one thing I should actually put forward to this committee, again, in being just full disclosure with that rear deck. Planning staff never identified any issues, but understanding that rear decks, even though there are no objections, my client would be open to potentially considering either privacy screening, even potentially tree plantings on the closer side on the east side, because that's always a good gesture between neighbors regardless.
Okay. Any other questions?
Through you, Madam Chair. You mentioned about the variance number eight, the pedestrian entrance, and you mentioned that you may be open to change that number. Did I understand it correct?
He...what I'm saying is, the architect's not present today. He would have been, when we were in dialogue with planning staff, if they had an issue at that time, he would have potentially made adjustments to that if he had to.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to confuse you.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, let's take it into committee for decision-making. Can I get a motion?
Can we discuss before we do a motion?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
I have a concern with the main pedestrian entrance heights. That's thirteen stairs above the driveway to get into the house. And usually, the architect will mitigate a bit by having stairs internal to the house. I find these houses that are perched up on the...they have a weird presence on the street, and I don't...just glancing at street view, I don't see anything in the area with that type of topology with that many steps up to the front entrance. So personally, I couldn't support that one. Maybe a bit of a variance, but I don't know how other people feel. So I'll stop talking.
No? That's good. So that would be variance number...
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. I think that is the same. It's variance number eight. That was the reason I asked the applicant if he mentioned that he is okay or he was open to revise that. But I have the same concern.
So variance number eight is a concern. Okay, anybody else? Does anybody share that or not share that, maybe that you'd want to...
I'm just wondering, I can't find, how high is the concrete hardscape platform, I guess, beside the...attached to the building? How high off? Yeah. It's called Covered Hardscape. It's thirty-seven point seven five meters. What is that? Am I reading this wrong?
Is that the front or the rear? I don't have the drawings up.
It's the rear.
Oh, sorry, it's in committee. I can't...
What? Sorry?
Sorry, the matter's in committee, so I technically can't be speaking.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I think that's area. Like, that is thirty-seven point seven square meters, right?
That's massive.
Yeah.
Massive.
Member Mazzari, you were about to say something?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. I share the same concern with my colleagues. I, looking at the street view, I think it's a really dominant entrance. I don't see any house is like that. I'm surprised that the planning staff doesn't comment on that. I think that's a...and that's a big variance. I... It could be easily reduced by some, you know, architectural revision to the inside and have some steps inside, so it's more aligned with the neighborhood.
Okay. All right. I think... Member Kassen, seems like you're ready for a motion.
Sure, Madam Chair. I will make a motion for approval of this application as amended. Do I need to read through all the variances, or staff good with them?
Well, I think...
There's no amendment.
There's no amendment, oh, yes, it's the rebuttal.
Yeah, so all the changes that staff had requested were captured in the revised public notice.
All right. Save and accept. Variance number eight. I am refusing that, but I would approve a max of 1.5 meters. What do I have to say?
You're modifying?
Modifying, thank you. Modifying variance number eight to a maximum height of 1.5 meters.
Okay.
Thank you.
And forestry?
And forestry number three.
All right, a motion on the floor from Member Kassen to approve that application, except with modification of variance number eight to 1.5 meters, and forestry condition number three applies. Seconded by Member Fazali. All those in favor? Okay, and all those opposed? Member Martin is opposing. Your application has been approved with that condition.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great evening.
All right, you too. Thank you. All right. So let's move on then now to item number twenty-six. Item number twenty-six, members, are...it's number eight eighty Eglington Avenue East. And this is to increase the height of an existing lower portion of south exterior wall to align with existing front parapet line of the existing financial institution. And so in this application, we've got one variance. MetroLink has some advisory comments. There is one letter of opposition on file, but nothing else noted. Let's get the agent out here, and that's Brent Davies. Mr. Davies, can you come in and say your name and address for our records, please? Mr. Davies? You're unmuted. If you can state your name and address for...
Madam Chair, he's not online. We're gonna have to track him down.
Okay, so while we're tracking down Mr. Davies, let's look at then turning our attention to the next item on the agenda, and that is item number twenty-seven, which is Nine Shoulders Court. And Nine Shoulders Court is to construct a second floor addition over the existing garage. Please note, members, that this is one variance. MetroLink has some advisory comments, and there is one letter of opposition again, I believe. Did I have that correctly here? Yep. And so we've got Mr. Rock Kim on the line. Mr. Rock Kim, if you can state your name and address for us, that would be helpful.
Hello. Hi, my name is Rock Kim. I'm the agent. My address is three eight six Young Street, Unit fourteen oh two.
Okay. Great. Members, there's no one to speak to this application. If you're looking through it, do you require a presentation?
No, no.
Question?
Just if they could, through you, Madam Chair, if they could just reflect on the letter of objection, just make some...
So there is...we don't require a full presentation, but there is one letter of objection on file, Mr. Kim. Did you see that letter of objection? It is...
Yes.
A letter from Mr. Key. And if perhaps you can just reflect on that and share with us any... You know, the concerns that they had was around loss of view impact, loss of sunlight, energy efficiency impact, impact on trees and landscaping. And they think of the bylaw, you know, intent and precedent. And, you know, thinking that, you know, the developments are negatively impacting the neighborhood. So that's sort of the synopsis of his letter, if you want to comment on that.
Let me explain very briefly about the objection. We are trying to make the second floor addition on the top of the existing garage, and then the setback, existing setback is 1.4 meter. The main wall height, what we have from the garage party is 5.5 meter, which is the city allowance is seven meter. We are about 1.5 meter lower than what the city zoning by law requires. So this is very negative effective to the neighbors, actually, as per the...compared to the seven meter main wall height of the zoning requirement with the 1.8 meter setback. And then the...all the neighbors, there are several neighbors already have 1.2 meter... Right beside, just a neighbor, five short dice setback has 1.2 meter. Same table to garage, the second floor addition, and the front of the house, there's twelve short dice already have 1.2 meter, and twenty-seven short dice have 1.5 meter. And there's a couple of houses has less than what the city requirement for the side yard setback is. So I think this is very minor for the less wall height, which is 5.5 meter main wall height. So I think this is a minor variance.
Okay, does that help?
Yep.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, if not, let's pull this into committee. And Mr. Kim, there's nothing else. Let's get a motion going. Can I get a motion? Member Martin?
Sure.
Go ahead.
I'd like to propose a motion to approve Nine Shoulders Court, one minor variance. That's it.
Right, there we go. A motion from Member Martin to approve this application as is, and seconded by Member Fazali. All those in favor? And your application has been unanimously approved, Mr. Kim. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair, we're unable to reach anybody related to item twenty-six, eight eighty Eglington Avenue. So you have two choices. You can adjudicate the application before you, or you can defer the item.
Okay, so it is a simple application, and we can make a decision here. They'll get the notice of it later. Or if you feel it's complicated? Yeah, they can't. Well, what we'll do is we'll leave that to the end. Let me move on to twenty-eight, just in case by chance they call you back. And then I think we could move forward with adjudicating that one. So let's move on to item number twenty-eight, members. So we're looking now at number one oh two Parkhurst Boulevard. Members, Parkhurst Boulevard, this one is to proposal to construct a one-story rear addition to an existing two-story detached dwelling. Please note, members, that there are three variances. There's some MetroLink's comments. There's two letters of support. And let's get the agent out here. There's no one else to speak to this application. Mr. Mahir Manios, are you there? If you can state your name and address for our records, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Mahir Manios, I'm the agent, number one Tequid Grove, Toronto, and three B Two Edge Nine.
Great. So now, as I'm looking through this and there's no one to speak to it, I'm gonna ask panel members if you require a presentation. I am not seeing anyone saying that. Then, you know, if there's any other questions, I'll just ask Mr. Manios if there's anything you want to say, any burning desire to say anything.
No, just the MetroLink's commentary. We're two hundred and seventy meters away from the Eglington line. There's about over twenty houses separating us from the right of way. So I'm a bit surprised about that notice from MetroLink's. Other than that, no, no comment.
All right, not a problem. They were advisory comments anyway, so nothing to worry about. And so let's move into committee. Can I get a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. If there are no other comments from my colleagues? No, no comments. Okay, so I propose...I forward a motion to approve the application. I believe it's a minor application, satisfies the foretest. This is the motion.
Motion from Member Fazali to approve this application as is, seconded by Member Kassen. All those in favor? And this application, Mr. Manios, has been approved without condition. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I will just double-check with Deputy Lamb. You still, you haven't been able to get in touch with Mr. Davies?
Madam Chair, we don't have anyone left on our WebEx, but I've just been notified that there may be a concern that the signposting was not done for this, which means improper notice, which I would suggest deferring this application.
Okay. All right, with that new development and information, members, we've got item number twenty-six, which is eight eighty Eglington Avenue, just to state that this is one variance. MetroLink's advisory comments, one letter of opposition, and now we're hearing that their proper notice has not... The due diligence of the advanced posting has not been done. As such, this looks like it might be an application we may need to defer. So given that, can I take it into committee and can I get a deferral motion? Or anything else that you're considering?
Madam Chair, I'm happy to make a motion for deferral for number twenty-six, eight eighty Eglington Avenue East in order to ensure the proper notice requirement was given.
All right, thank you. Motion from Member Kassen to defer this application, signee die, in order to have the proper posting done. And perhaps the next time the member, the agent, will be here to speak to the application. Seconded by? Yeah, Member Fazali has seconded that. All in favor? Okay, and so number eight eighty Eglington Avenue East, item number twenty-six, has been deferred, signee die. Now with that, I want to just say thank you, panel members, for doing such great, detailed, and impartial work today. Now with that, um, I want to just say, uh, thank you, panel members, for doing such, uh, great, detailed, and impartial work today as adjudicators. And a big thank you to city staff for your patience, your really hard work, and the help you've provided. With that, can I get a motion to terminate this session?
Yes, through Madam Chair, I forward a motion to adjourn this session.
Okay, Member Fazali with a motion to terminate. Who's seconding? Seconded by Member Martin. We're all in favor? Great, have a great day, everyone. Thank you.